Good evening, welcome to the Board of Selectmen meeting for Tuesday, June 20th, 2017. The first item of business is the approval of the minutes from June 6th. I'd accept a motion.
I move that we approve the minutes of June 6th as written.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Public comment on any item not on the agenda? Okay. Next item is reserve fund transfers and Sue Nickerson, our town accountant, is here. Welcome. Ted, Tom, and Sue, what's, how do you want to walk through these tonight?
Well, most of these, the vast majority of these are within the budgets that are managed by Sue Nickerson and she will take care of, I think, all of the others for the department.
And just for the benefit of context from the audience, the town's fiscal year actually closes on June 30th. And we not only have to have a balanced budget, but we have to have enough money in each departmental budget in order to settle everything up. You may recall that Town Meeting passed Article 13, I believe it was, which was a transfer from, from fund balance into the reserve fund to settle any bills that we couldn't contain within our existing budget. The biggest one is, is snow and ice. So what you're going to see this evening are, is really the Town Meeting approved that money. What we'll be doing now is taking some of that money and applying it to specific budgets so that, again, we can close the books at the end of the year. So Town Meeting has approved the transfer of these dollars on the whole. You're going to see that we're also going to have some intra-department transfers. If, for example, in the police department, we have a surplus in labor, in personnel dollars, but we're over budget in expenses, the money can only be moved by a vote of, of actually the advisory committee. And the votes that we're taking tonight will be advising the advisory committee, who is meeting later this evening, to, to make these happen. I, I think for, for the benefit of the taxpayers, what it says is that, really, we are very limited in our ability to move or spend any money without your approval. And so that's what we're doing this evening, again, in partnership with the advisory committee. Sue, where, where would you like to start?
Well, just a one note is the inter and intra department transfers, we can only do on the last quarter of the year.
Thank you very much.
Well, we might as well start with the Excel spreadsheet that you have in front of you. The first one on the list is snow and ice. The deficit was $432,749. And the reason the town's supply of salt and sand were depleted and had to be replenished in FY '17, the late winter storms and freezing over also contributed to the deficit.
Any questions or comments?
So, I'm sorry, so the deficit was what?
$432,749.
Okay, that's all right, okay. Great, thank you.
Any other questions?
And, and Sue, I, I seem to remember that this year's snow and ice is very much in line with, like, the five-year average, the 10-year average. Again, for, for the benefit of the viewing audience, this year at Town Meeting, you approved an increase in the snow and ice budget for next year of about $50,000. What we'd like to do over time is to increase the snow and ice budget so that these year-end transfers that we really pretty much do every year will get smaller and smaller as, as we move forward. Sue and Ted, would you prefer that we vote these as we go?
Really, whatever your pleasure is.
Okay.
Take a motion?
Okay. I'll make a motion to recommend a transfer from the reserve fund to the snow and ice removal account in the amount of $432,749.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, the second one is for legal services in the amount of $220,000. Legal expense is high due to several large projects and matters which require an unusual amount of legal time. If you have any questions, Tom Mayo is right over there.
Yeah, how does this compare? So I apologize because I haven't been following the legal budget over the last several years, but, you know, legal is a little bit like snow and ice in that we, we sort of ballpark what we think our expenses are going to be and then we true it up at the end of the year. So how has that been running, Sue or Tom? Have we been running true to budget?
So my recollection from last year is this is in line with last year's requests.
Okay. So sort of similar practice potentially?
That's right.
Where we look to increase that, that line item? Okay. I don't know. It just ends up being-
The problem with increasing the line item is you never know what your, what your legal costs are going to be each year.
Right.
Unlike snow and ice, where we know pretty much it's going to track to the averages over time, like you said, it's project-based. So last year, we had two 40Bs that required real estate counsel to work with the zoning board of appeals extensively. You know, the negotiation of the Hingham Maritime lease took a lot of that time. We had a number of personnel matters. If you go back over history, we didn't use Kevin Feely in labor council very much. We had a number of issues last year that required a lot of his time. And so I think those are the bulk of the issues. None of this relates to special legislation, litigation like Aquarian or any of that. That's all special budget. So this is all operational and, like you said, it's hard to determine. I think when we went through the budget, and I know, I can remember going through it over the years with advisory, you'd ask me that, and I'm, well, we have no cases planned next year, so.
[laughing]
If we're not sued, you know, we're not going to need too much, but, you know, certainly activity that comes in to our, we're a land use planning organization at some level, and a lot of that requires litigation or legal review.
Right. And I do think that the change that we made over time was to more, at least actively manage these projects and, and actively manage outside council, right?
That's right.
Yep.
And when we did estimate this for Town Meeting, it was at 250, so it has come down since then.
Okay. Great, thank you.
I would also say that the Selectmen's Office does a good job in terms of being the gatekeeper for accessing legal services-
That's a good point.
-so that we don't have a circumstance where you have multiple people contacting council. And that, I think that has helped us use our labor dollars efficiently over the past few years.
I'd agree with that. Questions, comments? Take a motion?
I entertain a motion to recommend transfer from the reserve fund to the Selectmen Legal Services Account in the amount of $220,000.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, the next one is for employees' Medicare taxes and for $80,000. New employees are replacing retired employees who do not have to pay Medicare tax. This is a direct link to salaries. This budget amount is not updated through the budget process and should be. We did increase it dramatically for next year, so hopefully I won't be coming back next year for this.
Okay.
But Sue means we didn't update it for the budget process for this particular year. We have in the past-
For '17, yes.
...and we aren't going forward. But this particular year, we didn't because we didn't think we were going to see that kind of shift in personnel.
Got you. Okay.
Questions? Questions from the audience? Take a motion?
I recommend a transfer from the reserve fund to the mandatory Medicare taxes account in the amount of $80,000.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The next one is workers' compensation for $75,000. This is to cover the cost for the remaining of the fiscal year. The town has had several long-term cases that hopefully will be resolved in FY '18. We did resolve one in '17. We have two cases right now that are pending, and hopefully we will close them in '18.
And Sue, does this, I can't remember the workers' comp budget for FY '18, is that, are we going to have to keep our eye on that?
We level funded it.
Okay.
But one of our legacy people has passed away, so hopefully it will balance out for the, for '18. And we are self-insured, so we pay dollar for dollar.
Yes.
It'll be the same as unemployment, which is going to be coming up next.
Thank you.
I mean, if you want to give some history and perspective on this, Mary, for the public, we've been self-insuring now for, at the recommendation of the town's insurance advisory committee in the early '90s, substantial savings. I believe they saved over $250,000 the first year. And we've been tracking that every year ever since by self-insuring.
Thank you. Take a motion?
Okay. I recommend a transfer from the reserve fund to the workers' compensation account in the amount of $75,000.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, the next one is for the fire department, for their overtime account in the amount of $40,000. Multiple personnel on extended leave, both sick time and injury. Currently, three members are out through the remainder of the fiscal year. We have the chief and the deputy chief here, if you have any questions.
I would say that, just for your perspective over time, certainly the time that I've managed here, the fire department rarely comes in for overtime transfers. So, you know, from my perspective at the department, it's extremely well-run, year in and year out. And when they come in, it's usually this result. As you know, firefighters are eligible for extended leave due to the nature of their jobs. It's one of 11F injuries that, you know, full pay, and some of those injuries are extensive. And we have three people out right now presently, and we have to cover all those shifts with overtime. So-
For the entire year?
We have to cover them for the period they're out. They're not out for the whole year, but they're presently out right now.
I thought I heard that.
For the remainder of the fiscal year?
Well, the, yeah.
Couple of weeks.
Remains of the fiscal year, where, you know, it's two weeks away. They haven't been out all year, but I think we've had one that's been out most of the year, so. Sometimes, we can't get into the details of the injuries, of course.
Sure.
And I, I would also just mention that as part of being self-insured, we also work with a firm to do a lot of the case management-
Yes.
-so that when the town does have employees who are out on extended leaves and things, that there is a, there is a structure in place to make sure that those leaves are properly executed.
Correct.
Any other questions, comments? Okay, take a motion?
I move to recommend a transfer from the reserve fund to the fire department OT account in the amount of $40,000.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, the next one is for unemployment compensation for $20,000. This is to cover the cost of unemployment claims for the fiscal, for this fiscal year. And the same with workers' comp, we are self-insured, we pay dollar for dollar. Had we gone to a company, we would be paying millions.
What's the-
Well, not a company, just, we go to a company, but if we, if we did not have the municipal exemption to pay based on our dollars, which sometimes doesn't go our way because the Department of Employment will provide a benefit, as you know, David Basler's worked with the governor's office over the last few years to tighten up some of those issues, but sometimes we pay a benefit and we can't get that money back. But it's still, so, we'd be paying, I think the minimum rate is 2.4% of payroll, so, you know, we got-
Very significant.
You know, we got a pretty big payroll, so that would be a little more than the 20,000 to 30,000 a year we spend on this, this budget item.
So what's the total budget, what's the total expenditure for the fiscal year of, for unemployment?
Our budget's $30,000.
Thirty, okay.
So we'll pay, we'll pay 50.
Okay. Thank you.
Questions? Okay, take a motion?
My turn. To recommend a transfer from the reserve fund to the unemployment compensation account in the amount of $20,000.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, the next one is emergency water service for $11,447. This is a quarterly bill we get from Aquarian to keep water in the fire hydrants. And when we did the FY '17 budget, we took the last quarter from '16 that we had and multiplied by four, that was our budget. Unfortunately, the rate went up, the last quarter of '16, so we're $11,447 short.
Ted, I just have a related question, which is that Aquarian has petitioned the DPU for an approximate 14% rate increase. There'll be public hearings next month. Our FY '18 budget does, that does not-
Does not incorporate any of those changes.
Okay. So to the extent that a rate change goes through, we will kind of have to keep tabs on that.
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Any questions on this transfer?
I move that we recommend a transfer from the reserve fund to the emergency water service account in the amount of $11,447.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, the next one is for Bear Cove Park expenses in the amount of $7,500. This is a new project for the Bear Cove off-leash, leashing program for IDs, signature, and tags.
Ted or Tom, do you want to speak to that?
Sure. So this is, this is made up of, and again, this is all predicated on, this money would only be spent if there was a program in place. So that hasn't happened yet, so this is a little bit, just preparation. However, the breakdown of the $7,500 is roughly $4,000 for IDs, roughly $2,000 for signage, and roughly $1,000 for tags, plus a few hundred dollars for incidentally, incidentals unknown right now. I don't know, like, today we were talking with conservation about some, maybe some appropriate signage or some roping off of this area or that area. So we needed a little bit of incidental unknown dollars right now to properly control what might get put in place. So $7,500 should cover us for year one. And most of that, just FYI, will be one-time money. This will not be recurring.
Sorry, what was the first number you ran?
Roughly $4,000 for IDs. That's the ID printer, the material, the ink, the cards. And again, we're anticipating a large enough stock that we would be able to permit-
Sorry, that's-
The large part of that is the printer.
Most of that's the printer.
So that's why we say it's not, $7,500 is not recurring.
And we will be discussing later tonight the Bear Cove off-leashing program that accompanies this reserve fund transfer, but again, advisory is going to be meeting shortly and taking this up. Any questions from the public on this reserve fund transfer? Okay, anything else, Paul or Karen?
Nope.
Take a motion?
I'd recommend a transfer from the reserve fund to the Bear Cove Park expense account in the amount of $7,500.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye. Can I, can I ask one more question?
Of course.
Is this going to be an account run through the Board of Selectmen's Office, the Town Clerk's Office?
So it'll be put into the Bear Cove Park account. However, there'll be, it'll be a line item in there that will be controlled by the, by the Selectmen's Office.
Okay, thank you.
So then we can also monitor it?
That's right. For accounting purposes, you want it to be where it's going to be used.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, the next one is contributory retirement for the amount of $1,155. This is to cover the cost of military service for their pension in FY, for FY '17. It was higher than previously budgeted.
So we're obligated, we've self-obligated, when our employees are deployed, we have to pay the, the contribution to the pension system while they're still deployed. And that's what this number is.
Questions?
Nope.
Take a motion?
I move to recommend a transfer from the reserve fund to the contributory retirement account in the amount of $1,155.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, and the last reserve fund transfer is for dispatch, the assessment, in the amount of $406. The FY '17 budget adopted by SREC, the South Shore Regional Emergency Communication Center, is subsequent to Hingham's budget process, and we are just slightly under by $406.
Closest we've ever been.
That's pretty good.
Pretty good.
You've seen the years, every year it was that they're going- I will tell you that, as you know, through this budget process, we finally saw the savings that we talked about when we started the program. And they came through this year. And we expect to see more in the next few years, especially if we can add member communities that are interested in becoming part of the success story that this has become, so.
Take a motion?
Recommend a transfer from the reserve fund to the dispatch assessment account in the amount of $406.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, we have one intra-department transfer request, and we're going to transfer from the group insurance to the town accountant's salaries in the amount of $5,066. And this is to cover the salary for the new benefits coordinator. We needed, unfortunately, extra hours to complete the transition to the new GIC health plans.
And that conversion's going to save the town significant top.
Yes.
Well over seven figures. So we also need to point out that, you know, thank you to the GIC coordinator and the benefits coordinator in your office for doing that. I think I mentioned it to the board before, but it's worth saying again, we signed up 100% of our eligible people. I think Sue had to send a couple cruisers to some people's houses, and, you know, we really had to take some steps to get over the line there, but we just didn't want anyone going without coverage for the year. Because we knew that if the GIC didn't get the sign up in those times, no matter what we said, we wouldn't be able to get their coverage.
Thank you.
Good job.
Great job.
Thank you.
Good job.
Take a motion?
I'll move to recommend an intra-department transfer to the town accountant's salaries account from the group insurance account in the amount of $5,066.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, now we're into intra-department transfers, and that is between either salaries to expenses or expenses to salaries. The first one is the assessors in the amount of $2,000. It's going to be transferred from the mapping account to the revale account. Increased number of inspections to meet DOR guidelines in preparation for revaluation. His overall budget balance will be a surplus in the excess of $4,000.
Good. So these are kind of two of the same activities, it's just a matter of-
But we have a separate line item, and we can't legally spend out of one, so we need your permission to move.
Questions, Paul, unless that?
No, 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 good.
Someone like to make a motion?
I recommend an intra-department transfer from the mapping account to the revaluation account in the amount of $2,000.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, the next one is Public Works, the sewer department. Transfer from expenses to the MWRA assessment account. Higher assessment cost than budgeted from the MWRA.
And this will be rate payer, this will be funded by rate payers, so-
100% by the North Hingham Sewer District, and, you know, this hasn't happened too often in the last few years. Usually we're a little over budget, but in this case, we were short.
Questions?
Nope.
MWRA also sets their policy, just like the dispatch, after our budget process. We're one of the earliest budget processes in the industry, so this happens to us.
And this is a modest amount relative to the assessment?
Pastime, pastime.
Correct. It's about 1.7, 1.8 million, so.
Someone like to make a motion?
Sure. I move to recommend intra-department transfer from the sewer expense account to MWRA assessment account in the amount of $3,088.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
The next one is also DPW to the transfer station in the amount of $7,000. Transfer from the expense account to the wage account. The amount requested is necessary for the following extraordinary and unforeseen reasons. The swap shop coordinator budget was underfunded and extra and unforeseen hours for the part-time senior clerk.
Questions from my colleagues?
So the swap shop coordinator budget was underfunded? What, it just was requiring more-
I think for Saturday, for Saturday hours.
Okay.
They weren't funded for Saturday hours.
Okay.
And was asked to keep it open.
Okay. Saturday's a big day.
It is.
Sure is.
We also, it's always amazing to me to see how many people volunteer at the swap shops, so I think if you, that should also be noted, that many people are very generous with their time. Someone like to make a motion?
I recommend an intra-department transfer from the DPW expense account to the DPW transfer station wages account in the amount of $7,000.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And our last one, intra-department transfer for the DPW of $85,000. Transfer from payroll to expenses. The amount requested is necessary for the following extraordinary, extraordinary and unforeseen reason. This transfer is to cover two expenses that were unforeseen and not budgeted. The first is $35,000 for line painting that is over budget due to extra painting required. Second is to cover security issues at the DPW building. The camera system indoors need to be upgraded to make the building more secure, which will cost $50,000.
Okay, so is the additional cost for the line painting because of the additional roadwork that we're undertaking, is that, it's just more?
Well, it's a thoroughly, but the traffic, if you recommend inside across the block or, you know, stuff, or things like that, that adds up over, over time, and I know for, that we hasn't increased that budget for a number of years, so it's all added up and kind of-
Now's the, now's the time. Okay.
Sure, sure, for, for, to fund that, government.
I'm sure that what he's been trying to do in the past years is fund this budget by supplementing from other areas as good within his expenses, but he can't.
Okay.
And it's just worth noting that the reason the payroll was, had surpluses, was an, they did not hire an unfilled, it was an unfilled position, but they did not fill.
Okay.
And Tom, I know you, you and I spoke this morning just briefly about the camera system indoors, but could you maybe share that with Paul and Karen?
Sure. So Randy Sylvester explained to me, or to us, that the camera system, the security system at the DPW is the same model, implementation year, et cetera, as the camera security system at the transfer station, which has failed. So Randy fear is that that's, that the DPW failure is imminent and wants to replace it before that happens so that he doesn't have a gap in security.
Okay. And so this sort of transfer would be, I mean, sometimes what ends up happening, right, is people have, or departments have funds in particular line items that they don't spend, and that's, those funds then drop to the, to the general fund, right?
Right.
And so instead of doing that, we're moving this money so he can take care of what he anticipates to be a significant security problem.
Exactly.
Okay.
And I think the concern would be that if that system were to fail before next year's Town Meeting, you know, we'd either be looking at a reserve, you'd be looking at a reserve fund transfer, but also potentially a period where you have, you know, you don't have the security that you need-
Right, right.
-there, so.
Okay.
Any questions from the audience? Okay, I take a motion?
I move to recommend an intra-department transfer from the DPW payroll account to the DPW expense account in the amount of $85,000.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
That is it for me. Thank you very much.
Good job, Sue. Sue, thank you, and your, your busy time starts with the books closing.
It does.
Sue, I'm going to pass these down. These are all signed and ready.
No, it never does stop.
For advisory.
My down period.
And those are all set.
That's the downside.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Next on the agenda is a public hearing on the request of national, we have two public hearings with National Grid. Randy, would you, would you like to introduce your guest?
Tom Mullenari, in the hearing office. He's here to assist me and observe the processes.
So people may remember that last year at Town Meeting, with the approval of $2 million for the road building program, we talked about the fact that Roger Fernandez, our project engineer, involved in so many things that we really did need additional engineering resources to do all the very important work in the town. So that was authorized, and Tom joined earlier this year, so we're glad to see you here tonight.
Thank you.
Barbara, welcome as well.
Oh, thank you.
So the first one is, is Kilby Street?
The National Grid hereby respectfully requests your consent to install and maintain approximately The National Grid hereby respectfully requests your consent to install and maintain approximately 825 feet, more or less, of eight inch main in Summer Street, Hingham, from the existing eight inch gas main near Justice Cushing Highway to the existing six inch gas main in Kilby Street, and approximately 290 feet, more or less. Am I supposed to go on? Or are we supposed to take them one at a time?
Well, the two G F, the Kilby Street one.
Okay, I'm sorry.
You're gonna spread Summer Street.
All right. So you want the Kilby Street.
Yes, please.
I had them, I had them together.
That's okay.
So that would be approximately 290 feet, more or less, of two inch gas main in Kilby Street, from Summer Street to pole number eight near Justice Cushing Highway. That's, that's to abandon the two inch gas main in Kilby, currently in Kilby.
When, when will that, when is that work? If it's approved tonight, what's the window for completing it?
That's a tough question. We'd like to be there tomorrow to start, but however, there's no crews available at this current time. I've been in conversations with the supervisor who schedules this work, and he's gonna try to expedite releasing a crew from another town and bring him in here to stop to replace this gas main. So I would expect the next couple of weeks, we'd see some action down there.
And Harry, how long from like, is this a three-day project, longer than that?
Well, this is a rather, you know, large project in comparison with the size of the main. However, there's not a lot of services, which generally takes a good deal of time. I would expect within three weeks, the project should be complete.
And during that three-week period, will, will it be down to one lane all of the time, some of the time? I'm just mindful that in the summer, Route 3A, you know, a lot of people wanting to go to the beach. I'm just mindful of the impact that this might have on, on how.
Well, fortunately, we have, you know, a clear cut detour going out to lay at East Street, because as soon as the gas company's through, we're going to grind that road up and we have to close it off at certain ends. As far as the gas main installation goes, for the most part, they can keep probably one lane of traffic open, depending on where both they are. I mean, the road, especially Summer Street section's relatively narrow, but they'd probably keep it open for one lane. We want them to complete it as quickly as possible.
Sure.
So that it won't delay after, you know, schedule for reconstruction. So we'll just take it, you know, and see how fast we can go, how much traffic can, you know, allow to access that area. I'm sure the police will have plenty of details out there to get traffic in around the job site, so.
But our schedule is already set for our repaving of that area, correct?
Yes, it is.
We can tell people when that is, so that we know that this will be done before.
Yeah. I'd ask if we could be sure that we do notify and it's, it's always hard, it's hard to do the roads in the summer anyway, but particularly this, this stretch of road, because it's so well-traveled.
Well, the good part is there's not a lot of residential traffic in that area, so that, I mean, that's one of our primary concerns. Our road construction schedule, we try to get it all complete by Labor Day before schools start up and everyone's back from vacation. So, I mean, my contracts are on a tight schedule to meet my demands, and one of them is to get this road ground up and graded and paved by.
Certainly.
Second week of August.
Yeah. Okay. Questions from my colleagues?
Ledge? Possibly. Chip? They've had to open up that area of different sections of that main for weeks or last several years, and ledge hasn't been a real issue up to this point. So hopefully, you know, they're gonna be putting it inside the existing main towards a centerline of the road, so we'll be working away from the ledge. So hopefully that won't, you know, delay things at all as far as the installation and replace where that gas main goes.
Is, is this portion of the roadway system on schedule for repaving?
As of right now, it is. I plan to push it to completion. I expect all our work to be completed by, you know, September 1st.
I kind of remember that it was around this time last year that we were, our road building schedule is aggressive, and so we know that for National Grid, you get a lot of requests, and we appreciate your continued cooperation to bring crews over. It helps, it helps us all to get these done as quickly as we can.
To me, I would like to add that National Grid has been extremely cooperative as far as replacing gas main in front of our road construction schedule, so that once we do these roads, they stay in decent shape for years to come.
Yeah, yeah.
What's the, what's the cutoff point on Kilby? Why are you cutting it off there?
There's a gas main that's been replaced from like, East Street up to Summer Street already.
Okay.
So they're gonna continue it down to the end of the main or closer to 3A. I think, I don't know if you can't see the dates on some of the plans, but, even though it says 1941, that's pretty recent for a gas main.
Okay. And I, you know, I just have Mary's concern as well as just, you know, notification to neighbors, you know, once we, once we know what the schedule is, if there's a way to get that message out on our website or in the journal, you know, I just think a heads up to folks, so they can plan around this.
Harry, why don't you tell them, I know the DPW for our road projects has a very rigorous process to notify everybody. It's like a five-step.
Yeah, as far as, you know, our work goes, we give out notices two or three weeks in advance, and then again, before we do the final reservicing again, we hand deliver notices. I will inform the gas company, and they've always been cooperative as far as, you know, promoting their, their work and, you know, with door hangers and notices. And if I, you know, request maybe something that, a message board or something, maybe they'll cooperate as far as that goes as well.
Okay.
Motion.
Are there any questions or comments from the audience? I'll take a motion.
Move to approve the request of National Grid to install and maintain approximately 290 feet of two-inch gas main in the Kilby Street. This gas main will originate from intersect of Summer Street and continue under the surface of Kilby Street for the entire length of completion at the intersection of Chief Justice Cushing Highway, Route 3A. This gas main will replace an existing two-inch bare steel decayed main that is approximately 76 years old, and this approval is subject to the stipulation the Department of Public Works has outlined in a letter dated June 6, 2017.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Make a motion to approve the request of National Grid to.
Could we hear about that one? The second one?
I thought we.
I just, I thought.
No, actually, we started.
We started, yep.
Yeah. That's 825 feet of eight inch gas main intersecting with the, with the Kilby, the new one.
Okay. Are there any questions on that second?
Nope, I asked my question apparently out of order, but, okay.
Any questions? Questions from the public?
Okay. Someone like to make a motion?
Move to approve the request of National Grid to install and maintain approximately 825 feet of eight inch gas main in Summer Street. This gas main will originate from Chief Justice Cushing Highway, Route 3A, and continue under the surface of Summer Street for the entire length of completion at the intersection with East Street. This gas main will replace an existing eight inch beer, bare steel decayed main that is approximately 87 years old. This approval is subject to the stipulation of the Department of Public Works as outlined in the letter dated June 6, 2017.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you so much.
Thanks for coming in. Nice to meet you.
Thanks, everybody.
Say to Harry.
Okay. Next is a World War I flag. Keith?
Hi, Tom. Welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. Tonight, I'm here to speak about the nations and the Commonwealth's plan to commemorate the Great War. I'll read a brief, and yes, brief, two minutes or less, history of the war, and then segue into what our community will do to honor the 189,000 men and women who served from the Commonwealth, and the 5,775 that gave their lives. I'm joined here tonight by two members of the Veterans Council, Mr. Tom Burbank and Mrs. Janine Shucheky. So if you'll allow me, I'll read this into the minutes. I provided you a copy, and Sally has a copy as well. Commemorating the Great War, World War I called the Great War until the world learned that there would be more than one such war in the 20th century, was the first total war of the modern period. The participants, unprepared for the long and bloody conflict that ensued after the summer of 1914, scrambled to mobilize their manpower and industry to prosecute the war. All searched for a decisive military victory. Instead, dramatic and largely unforeseen changes in warfare quickly followed one another, in the end altering both Europe and the larger, larger Western culture that it represented. The United States reluctantly entered Europe's Great War on April 6, 1917, and tipped the balance to the Allied victory. Under unprecedented government direction, American industry mobilized to produce weapons, equipment, munitions, and supplies. The Americans had entered a war that was deadlocked. Opposing armies were dug in, facing each other in trenches that ran nearly 500 miles across northern France, the notorious Western Front. Two million Americans volunteered for the army, and nearly three million more were drafted. Almost three years of horrific fighting resulted in huge losses, but no discernible advantage for either side. American involvement in the war was decisive. Within 18 months, the sheer number of American doughboys added to the lines ended more than three years of stalemate. Germany agreed to an armistice, ending the bloody conflict on November 11, 1918. From April 6, 2017, through November 11, 2018, the World War I Centennial Commission has asked all communities throughout the nation to coordinate events and activities commemorating the centennial of the Great War, honoring the participation of the United States and its citizens in the war effort. The centennial of World War I offers an opportunity for people to learn about the commemorative and commemorate the sacrifices of their predecessors, and to understand how the events of 100 years ago have affected our nation, its people, and the world ever since. So with that said, here in Hingham, the Department of Veteran Services, in conjunction with the Hingham Veterans Council, will fly this World War I commemorative flag that you see behind me, in front of Town Hall, and on the shores of the harbor at Whitney Wharf, over this entire period of national remembrance, culminating with a special awards ceremony during our annual Veterans Day program.
Thank you. Questions? Questions, comments from my colleagues?
I've been to Verdun, and I don't think you can truly appreciate the enormity of what happened there until you go into the ossuary, which has got over 100,000 bodies whose identity will never be known from that battlefield. It's pretty grim. Yeah, I'm glad, I'm glad you're doing this. Got to remember.
You know, I just think these moments of remembrance are, are important for all of us, and I appreciate the work of your office and the Veterans Council in, in helping us be mindful about, about this.
Well, thank you for your continued support.
I would echo my colleagues' comments and just mention that the Veterans Council here in Hingham plays a very important role in taking care of the veterans here in Hingham, as well as remembering those who called Hingham home and weren't here. Our Veterans Council is, is all volunteer-driven, and as we've been going through the talent bank process, the Veterans Council is going to have, I believe it's five openings this year. And by statute, some of those openings have to be filled by a veteran, while others are civilian. And I think you see, we all see the great work that Keith and members of the Veterans Council do all around town. And if anyone is interested in joining in this very important work, we would encourage you to fill out a talent bank application. The Veterans Council is, is really an important part of Hingham, and I've had the privilege of attending a number of events at the State House, and Hingham's commitment to veterans, and Keith in particular, are held up as a model throughout the Commonwealth. So it would be a great group to join if anyone is interested.
Come on in, the water's fine. Thank you again.
Thank you so much.
Thanks for being here.
We'll start this up this week. As you know, the flags are at half-staff right now for a representative who passed away, so by Friday, these will be up.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Next on the agenda is the HCAM Long-Term Strategic Plan.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. Thank you for your time. I'm Laura Burns, and I am here as the newly-minted President of the Hingham Community Access Media. Jim Dellett, I was Vice President, and Jim Dellett, who served as President ably for eight years from the beginning of HCAM, has stepped down. He stepped all the way down to Vice President, so that we don't have to change the names on the checking account, which is convenient. We're here, and Phil Philippies is our interim Executive Director. And we're here today at the suggestion of the Cable Advisory Committee, who thought that we should update you on what's going on, what, some things that we're doing to fulfill our strategic plan. What you have before you is the narrative part of the strategic plan. It also has a huge spreadsheet listing all the tasks needed to achieve the things in this plan and a timeline for doing it, and I thought that was probably TMI for this meeting, although it's certainly available if you'd like to have a look at it. I'm sure it's, you'd find it fascinating. But the reason we're here is to go over this with you. The Cable Advisory Committee, Committee thought we should update you on it. The reason we developed this plan two years ago is because we realized that we were moving into a new environment in the mediascape, as I'm sure everyone is aware. The business model of all media companies is up in the air, and that means ours is too. For those at home who may not be familiar, HCAM is a private nonprofit, and we have a contract with the town to deliver the services of providing the content on the, the government channel, the public channel, and the educational channel on cable. So the reason our business model is up in the air is because our funds, which come from the town, are, come from our Verizon and Comcast license from a fee on that, and one of the predictions is that the number of subscribers is going to fall, or stay the same, or, or who knows? But there's a great deal of uncertainty out there, and our goal is to be able to continue doing what we do, which I like to call delivering the hyper-local content about Hingham that you can't get anywhere else. But we felt that we needed to think strategically about how to be able to continue to do that in case our revenues are threatened, which we think they might be. So there are a lot of cable access companies out there, and they're all facing the same problems, so there's a lot of discussion of this in our business, and we, there are two things that this means for us. First of all, we're seeking to increase the, the kinds of non-cable revenue that we can bring in to enable us to continue going if cable revenues drop. So Phil is going to talk a little bit about that later. And secondly, we're, we are envisioning ourselves as an entity that might wish to deliver services to a community larger than Hingham. There, one of the things we're thinking of, for example, is with our brand-new studio, beautiful studio, which I hope you've all visited, to provide production services for hire, so that we can bring in some revenue that way. And so this, that's just an example, but that would, you know, could address or come from or be connected to a community that's larger than Hingham. So that has led to a rebranding effort. So that is, that's kind of the, the general picture. So I'm going to turn it over to Phil to talk about a few details.
Hi, guys. Thanks for having us. Our first goal was to introduce a new mission statement for this entire strategic plan, and that is as follows: to foster, develop, and distribute content which preserves history, facilitates civic engagement, and builds community for the future; to provide services which advance the adoption of 21st-century media; and to inspire and empower members of the community to share their ideas and hobbies and passions with the community. As Laura mentioned, we did have our building expansion last year. Everything has gone, I think, better than anybody could have imagined. We have had record numbers in programming, record numbers in member-produced programming, record numbers in people from the community taking our classes, and we're very excited about the growth that we're seeing with that. That does cover our studio expansion, because it is complete. Moving forward, we've, we've decided to be doing business as Harbor Media. That is how we would be able to do some of the things that Laura was mentioning. What this does is enhance our rebranding with things such as a new website, the members that we currently do have, and the community at large. One point I just want to make is that even with the name change, we will still be doing everything that we have agreed to in our agreement. Nothing will change as far as our public education and government channel. As far as the alternative revenue for HCAM, what alternative revenue means to us is that we would be looking into things like fundraising, community partnerships, that's another word for sponsorships, underwriting of shows, and production services. Laura did mention that production services could mean that a company comes to us and wants some type of commercial made. It also helps our members where we've often been in this position that somebody comes in, they have this great idea, this great talent, and they want a show made. Where we have four or five members of our staff, we get stretched very thin with how many shows we can do monthly. So we do provide those members with an inexpensive rate sheet, so that for a minimal amount of money, they're able to have us still do that show for them and still get that content on the air. We believe that as the quality of our work increases, so too will all of these things that we're trying to do. When we began doing this, we weren't sure what was allowed in our agreement and what wasn't, so we did seek legal clarity on this, and we were able to find out that everything was allowed. And more importantly, this isn't new to public access. We are actually one of the few access stations that are not looking at things like this to kind of contribute with revenue. We feel like we are a little bit behind in that regard, and this is our attempt to catch up. And that's my overview of our strategic plan.
Thanks. And I'll, coming up on asking if you have any questions or discussion, but I just want to mention, I, I'm not sure I gave the, the ultimate vision is, we all know that content is moving to the web. We need to be there too. So this is part of, we, we don't think we have the answer to how you do that, but we are trying to set ourselves up to be in a position to be able to continue to deliver our content where people actually go to get it. So that's our presentation. Any comments or questions?
Questions?
You know, I'll just reiterate and say I enjoy watching the committee meetings through the, the internet. I'd request once again.
There you go.
That the HD capacity be ticked up a little bit. You know, the sound is good, but, if you know what I mean.
Yes.
Yeah, we do.
Actually, like the blurry picture. I think it's better for me overall. And I, I confess that I watch myself on HCAM. So I guess I have a couple of questions. One is, you have some web-based, like, sort of rerun content, so you can go access, you know, Asking for a Friend. I, you know, you can go access meetings again and again and again and watch them. The question I guess I have
The question I guess I have is, the contract with Comcast and Verizon are both coming up for renegotiation?
Yep.
Verizon right now, Comcast next year.
And I guess, how do you see, how do you see that progressing, given your strategic plan and the change in the marketplace?
Okay, so you are the licensors. You give the license, and the Cable Advisory Committee is negotiating for you to get the best possible license. And so I would actually suggest that you ask that question of the Cable Advisory Committee. It involves the negotiations, and you would probably want to do that in executive session.
And we've just actually started that, and I can give you one little piece that I just heard from one of your colleagues, the HD component. That's a big part of our negotiations right now, and at some point in time, and maybe this is the point in time, or the first one, we've gotten a lot of resistance on that. They gave one community in the Commonwealth the HD capability of these channels. They claim it's a trial, and they're not committing to anywhere else. But I think you mentioned the use of the word blurry. People want to see things, and they want to see them clear. And if we're not going to get the HD, most people, I think, are starting to watch HD at home and, you know, skip the SD channels, standard definition. So, you know, this is a 10-year agreement we're going to make with them. It's, you know, hard to think out 10 years on technology, but if we look back on 10 years, we see the changes. So, you know, I think it's important for us to get that HD capability in that contract, and that's one of our key aspects. You'll hear more from Cable as they ramp up. I think they've just had a few meetings getting ready for this.
Okay. The, it was interesting to me, because I toured the facilities Halloween weekend when you had the open house, that there's a future location, that you're looking at maybe moving somewhere else. Is that because of the size of the space, the location?
Yeah. This is, the plan was in 2015, and we still did not know if we were going to be in another location or if we were going to rebuild there. So that part of the plan is complete for now. However, we do hold out, it's, we love everything about our location except its location. We're, you know, we're in the South Shore Park, formerly the South Shore Office Park, and it's not a central location for Hingham residents. So we did look extensively and had some help from the town in looking at town properties. Nothing really came to pass. And so when we built, we put an emphasis on putting money into things that could be moved, in case another opportunity comes up down the road to be in a more central location. But having done this rebuild, we're not focusing on that right now.
The space is beautiful.
Yeah. We just wish it was somewhere else.
Are you satisfied with the amount of programming you have from town government? Or would you still like to see more committees and boards televising their meetings?
Oh, well, from my personal point of view, the more, the better. That has always been my personal point of view. And, but Phil will tell you that with our resource, you know, that's a resource question as well. So he's got a great system for people to sign up to, you know, but sometimes there's a traffic jam, and it's hard to decide where we're going to put our resources, and that's always an interesting dance, because it's not really up to us to decide what meetings we should be covering. That's really up to you and the town government to make your priorities clear, and we'll try to tell you what our, how far our resources go. But it's just an ongoing dance. I don't know if you want to add anything to that.
Yeah. Would you like?
Yeah, maybe there's a good, I'm glad you said that. I'm glad you asked that question. Phil has been engaged for the last couple of months in working here at Town Hall, looking at everything, looking at all of our equipment, because we could film more committee meetings at the same time if we upgraded the equipment.
Okay.
So what you have here, and Phil will tell you a little bit more about it, but this is the total wish list of everything that anyone wanted at Town Hall, which you'll be able to tell by the bottom line, you know, our capital budget does not stretch this far. But the process of deciding what the priorities are and where we should put our resources is a discussion that we look forward to continuing with you and with the Office of the Selectmen in general about how to go forward, which of these priorities should be met and so forth.
And, you know, this is very helpful, and thank you for doing this. It sort of seems like, you know, there are going to be some trade-offs here, you know? If you do high-def cameras in here, then that's fewer capital dollars, for example, to wire another room, which might give you the ability to cover more meetings. So it's going to be a series of, a series of trade-offs.
You want to add anything on that, Phil?
Absolutely. I won't go through every item line by line, because there's too many. But the easiest way for us to approach this, and this was a high priority for me, because I've been in a position where I had to film the meetings, and now I'm in a position where I have to train the people that do the meetings. And it takes a few months before people start getting in the rhythm of it, especially on the second floor. So the best way that we approached this was to kind of do it in phases. You mentioned something about high-definition. We are able to control what we're able to control. So we can change over and move to high-definition with these three phases for the school committee room, this room, and the second-floor room. But ultimately, if Comcast and Verizon do not install that equipment in that IT room down the hall to receive that high-definition equipment, that's basically as far as we can go.
You're only as strong as your weakest link.
So we're going to do our part so that at least what you see online is as clear as possible, full-high-definition. But again, we are, we're preparing so that, and now Comcast and Verizon has shifted, because they will charge you for installing that equipment. So it's a little bit easier than a no to swallow in some regards. So there are options to work around that. We just kind of have to play it out and see what they come back with.
No, and I echo Mary's concern and interest in this. I think that, you know, the ability to film the meeting and the ability to provide for sort of better, broader participation, either here in Town Hall or, you know, by being able to view at home, you know, I think we've had some discussions about making sure that we're in rooms that can accommodate the crowds that want to attend, the meetings that they want to attend. Having equipment, you know, one of the things I talked about when I was campaigning was, you know, instead of having people come up to the mic, could we use handheld mics to foster more dialogue from the audience? So I do think that technology piece is an important part of our government function, so I look forward to those continued conversations.
Absolutely. I just want to mention that in this plan, if we did do everything in here, it would eliminate the need for anybody to be in a room if they were to film it. We'd run everything from our server room right across the hall, and that means simultaneous meetings, up to four meetings at once, because we can split the room downstairs in half, also open it up. Microphones would have switches on them. All the microphones on the tables would be wireless and able to pick up two or three people, so you don't need to get eight microphones to mic eight people anymore. You can do it with three. So you're saving costs, but then the price of that equipment actually increases over time. So you want to make sure you get good stuff.
So, bottom line, you can do it, but it'll cost.
Yeah, of course. I'm going to just add one more point before we head out. I had seen, I think it was on either Twitter or Facebook, this is, it's kind of an H-CAM thing, not directly with this, but you're here, and it said something about, wouldn't you love to see town meeting live?
It did?
And yes, Laura Burns, it did. And knowing Laura Burns' feeling about that, I would make the request that if H-CAM at any time is contemplating a live broadcast of town meeting, that that be a conversation that you would come and have with us, with the moderator, and with the advisory committee. There are pros and cons to doing that, and we're not going to have the discussion here tonight, but I did see it, I'm pretty sure it was on an H-CAM site, and if I were H-CAM, that would be something I'd naturally look towards. I would just say there might be some unintended consequences, so let's have that conversation at the right time, if we're going to have it.
I agree. A lot of that came from the public that just wasn't able to make it, that's just used to seeing the meetings live. They just said, where's town meeting live? I'm not sure what that post was exactly, if it was a poll of wanting to know something.
Yeah, and I, you know, and I remember seeing it, and after my blood pressure stabilized a little bit, I thought I'm going to...
I have no intention of doing that anytime soon.
Madam Chair, this is not a discussion that H-CAM is planning to have.
Thank you. Terrific. Phil, Laura, thank you so much for this, for the great work.
Thank you for your time. We appreciate it.
Okay. You're on schedule. So it's eight o'clock. We still have this evening on the agenda. We're going to be starting in a moment to talk about Bear Cove Park. We're also going to have a discussion about the Lincoln Building sidewalk cap, the formation of a Route 3A task force. We have, the board has to take up a memorandum of agreement related to the Broadstone Bear Cove, which is the 40B development on Beale Street. We're talking about selectmen goals and objectives and some other things. And I say that to set the table, to say that we have still a number of significant and time-sensitive matters to take up this evening. With respect to Bear Cove, and thank you to those who have come for this tonight, I'd like to just tell you about the process that we're going to follow this evening and what we're going to do. A few weeks ago, when the draft off-leash program was put together, we announced that there would be a couple-week window for public feedback, and we asked that all that be submitted to the board by, it was last Friday, is it?
Yeah, Friday at 10 o'clock.
By Friday, by Friday at 10 o'clock. As you'll see when we get into this discussion, we got a lot of great feedback from some people in this room, probably from some watching. I believe I speak for all of us when I say that we very carefully read, considered, are still considering a lot of that information. We got, I think, 97 suggestions about, you know, change this, maybe do this, and the three of us have not had a chance to talk about any of those, because we can't do that without being here in an open meeting. And one of the reasons we wanted your feedback in advance is so that we could prepare for this conversation and we could have it. So here's what I would like to do. I'm going to allow no more than 10 minutes, if there is anybody who's here in the audience who did not write anything in, who wishes to make a point, or ask the board to consider something or make a comment. If you've already sent us your comments in writing, we do have them all, but again, we're trying to balance moving along, because we know this is time-sensitive to all of you, with also making sure everybody's been heard. At that point, what we're going to do is very similar to what our zoning board of appeals and our planning board process does. We're going to close the hearing, and that means that we're going to discuss and deliberate. And, you know, folks, that'll all be done out in the public, and I think you'll see that we've got everybody's feedback here, we've got some of our own thoughts as well. So I'll just start out and ask if there's anyone in the audience who hasn't already given us any feedback, who would like to make a comment about the proposed off-leashing program. Yes, please. And if you could please come to the microphone, if you could please just give us your name and your address.
My name is Dorothy Scholz. I'm a resident of Weymouth, not Hingham.
Welcome.
Thank you. I have enjoyed Bear Cove Park prior to the off, you know, the leashing law, and we worked really hard to try and come up with a compromise so that people who want to be able to walk free of dog interruption can, but that those of us who want to really enjoy our dogs free can do so. If we have to worry every time our dog is, is he 37 feet away from me, or is he 41 feet away? You know, that gets kind of iffy. Certainly having to bring to Town Hall of another town my homeowner's insurance for somebody I don't know to be looking over, I consider, first of all, a violation of my privacy, and, second of all, it smacks of means testing for walking your dog. The, you know, it's kind of between people who are there. You know, if people are out on the street somewhere and something happens, the town doesn't require proof of insurance. You don't have to prove your kid has liability insurance before he rides his bike up the street. So, you know, I think the object that is supposed to be for everyone to be able to enjoy it. And I think rather than saying that you have to be sure that your dog will never approach someone in a manner that they might perceive as unpleasant, you know, some people are afraid of dogs. I walk a big dog. If it comes over and you're afraid of dogs, and she won't jump you, but if you're afraid, you're afraid, and that would be unwelcome. So my suggestion is that people who feel that way shouldn't be there on the days that the dogs are free, and that we should be able to, this is supposed to be a compromise where everyone can be happy and not sort of a cynical play with, look, we're doing what town meeting said, but you still can't come to the park and enjoy it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else who would like to be heard on this before the board starts to Okay, I'm going to turn it to the table, and process-wise, we all received a document, and Ted and Tom, thank you for putting this together. It contains, it had 96 items. I found a 97th that might have been in there, but of different items in some different categories. What I might suggest to my colleagues is that we walk through these categories, and, Tom, if you could, if you have a kind of a clean set of the document that was shared with the public a couple of weeks ago...
So you all do in the back of that packet that I just handed.
Okay. And if you could kind of keep track of that, that may help us move along. So for the, again, for the benefit of the audience, these are our 96 items. We're not going to go through each one, but they are in some categories. And the first category has to do with insurance and legal. And I would just say, for the benefit of the public, that similar to the previous speaker, we had some people, we had some people suggest that it was not appropriate to show proof of insurance, that it placed an undue burden. We also had a request, just to give you a sense of the spectrum of feedback we had, we also had a request to have a minimum liability amount on a policy. So for, you know, again, all different ends of the spectrum.
Well, my favorite was, there were two that really jumped out at me. One was in terms of both ends of the spectrum. One was, I can't wait to get back and enjoy Bear Cove Park with my dog off-leash. And then the other one was, the Board of Selectmen is insane for entertaining the allowance of dogs off-leash. So, and really, really, they fell in those two sort of, you know, tranches, and they were about 50/50. So you, and you folks that worked on the Share Bear Cove effort, you know this, right? You know that there are those two sort of polarized camps. What we're trying to do tonight and over the, you know, over the last several weeks and months, is sort of make some sense of that in a reasonable, rational way, that we can get folks back enjoying the park.
Okay. So as you look, there were 13 items that related to sort of insurance and legal. And Paula, Karen, I don't know if, you know, we've got a few that were suggested by Ted and Tom.
Well, I guess, to jump in, I mean, I, actually, I watched myself on H-CAM at the last meeting, and I sort of said my piece at that point. So my sort of general approach to this hasn't changed. The couple of things that have stood out to me in the process, really, is with respect to the insurance requirement, you know, I agree with you, Dorothy, I agree with you, Jane, this wasn't meant to be an economic obstacle for folks. And I was, that was my gut reaction when it was proposed, was like, well, you know, is this just a sham, right? Like, yeah, you can walk your dog, but it's going to cost you $10,000 to walk on odd days. So a bunch of us actually talked with Bruce Minowitz, who's the insurance agent for the town. And I talked to Bruce as most recently as tonight, and we sort of ballparked an average tenant insurance policy, I think I said last time, ranges from $100 a year to $175 a year. And so I asked him to throw out a quote for $130... And so I asked him to throw out a quote for $130 tenants' policy, that would carry $15,000 of insurance for the contents of your apartment, and $300,000 in liability insurance. So, you know, I know it's not nothing, but I think that the comfort of knowing when you're engaging in a risky activity, that you have the wherewithal to stand behind damage or injury caused by your pet off-leash, gives me some peace of mind. And to me, it's responsive to the folks who stood up at Town Meeting and said, you know, what happens to me if I get hurt? Yes, I have medical insurance, but, you know, potentially I have out-of-pocket expenses that wouldn't be covered otherwise, and this would be a resource for those folks. So, you know, I think it's a reasonable, I'm not interested in proposing a particular number, I'm also not interested in collecting anybody's insurance policy. What I'm interested in doing is crafting a certification that you'd sign that says, hey, I know what the rules are, and I have liability insurance that covers potential damage or injury by my dog. And yeah, you know, I do know people can lie, they may lie, I am trusting that people are coming at this with the same goodwill that I am, and so, you know, that's the way I would envision the insurance requirement rolling out.
Yeah, I'm sort of in the same place you are, which is, I don't, I'm uncomfortable asking people to produce a copy of a policy. I think it also creates an administrative burden, and, you know, as I've been thinking about this, there's a lot of trust that's built into this, and, you know, we can't, we can't write rules and regulations that cause trust. You know, all of you have to trust that we are making a sincere, genuine effort to make this work, which is why we've been spending so many hours on it for the last several weeks. We're not trying to make it more difficult, we're trying to make it work. I heard loud and clear from a lot of people a year ago that said, you know, during that one-year period when we were sort of trying to see if this could work with everybody on good behavior, you know, there wasn't enough structure around it to make it work. It was doomed to fail, and I have, I've thought about that a lot. I think we've also, you know, I actually went back and I read the warrant, I watched the Town Meeting presentation, and, you know, one of the things that a member of the advisory committee said was, there need to be meaningful restrictions and a workable framework for this, and a workable framework to address problem situations when they happen, and I feel like we're trying to do a lot of that. And, you know, I will tell you that the first time I opened up that document, and I thought rules and regulations, I thought, wow, this is, this is bigger than I thought, there's a definitions page, and then I realized, you know, that's going to be kind of necessary to make it work. Again, I go back to the noise, to the, when the high school field project was going on, there was a usage policy, and, you know, I thought, well, you know, usage policy should be pretty easy, you know, you don't turn the sound system on after a certain hour, you turn it off, you know, you only have it at a certain decibel level, and the devil was in a lot of the details. And I think at the time, when that, when that particular usage policy was passed, I think you had neighbors and abudders who felt vulnerable when it was passed, I think you had athletic teams that felt that this $6 million investment the town made was not being fully utilized, and what's the big deal with my name being announced when I get to start on the lacrosse team? And I think what people found after the one-year look back was that it really went very smoothly, and that's, that's my hope with this. So I'm, I'm along the lines of you, as you, Karen, which is, I do think that it's appropriate to have an applicant certify that they have an insurance policy. I understand that that can be a hardship, but I'm looking at the hardship in another way. If there is somebody who is in any way injured in the park with, you know, by an animal, and they don't have the economic means to get the medical care that they need, you know, I'm sort of looking and saying, where should that risk fall? And if I have to make a choice, I'm going to err on the side of someone who is injured through no fault of their own, because I don't want them to be vulnerable. Paul, what about you on the insurance?
I dissent respectfully. I've represented people who have been injured by dogs, bitten, I've been tasked with representing people who own dogs that have bitten others. My first priority that I've consistently said to anybody who is listening is that I see this as a public safety issue, I genuinely do. I believe firmly that the law is firmly against a dog owner whose dog bites or injures someone else or a keeper. It's strict liability, they're very difficult cases to defend against, and, you know, I realize that there are people that are very responsible, and they would have insurance to cover their pets regardless of any regulation, but I realize that there are people who are not. And I think a certification without the requirement that we have something on file that indicates that they're insured is meaningless. And quite frankly, you know, if people do lie, and someone goes in there and gets hurt, and I'm talking about gravely hurt, and they go looking for a remedy where there is none, they're simply going to turn to the town, and you know what? This is going to become a quagmire that we, we're going to revisit, we're going to continue to revisit it, and we're going to find ourselves litigating against some member of the public that got hurt by a dog who had no coverage, the owner either was judgment-proof or, you know, evaded identification, and the only remedy left for the person is to make a claim against the town. I mean, a dog is, it's strict liability, and, you know, we issue permits in this town all the time where we require proof of insurance, that, to me, is not burdensome. This is a privilege that we're talking about here. If you don't want to produce a certificate of insurance, to have your dog running loose in Bear Cove, no big deal, you can still bring your dog in there, you just have to bring a leash. You know, to say that all you have to do is check off that you've got insurance, it's not enough. And I just can't resolve doubts for the benefit of a dog owner at the expense of the public, and so.
I hear you.
Sorry, but I just can't-
No, 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 I, look, I was, I'm there too, and I'm just, I'm trying to balance the administrative burden here at Town Hall, I'm trying to balance the burden, you know, like Mary said, you pick up this, this packet of stuff, and as I said the last time, you think, okay, they've taken all the joy out of walking my dog off-leash at Bear Cove Park, that was not our aim. The one other thing that Bruce Minowitz said in an earlier conversation with him was, many of the, many of the bigger landlords anyway are requiring tenants' insurance now, because they don't want, they don't want to be the deep pocket in any liability claims among tenants. So like, you leave your bike in the hall and someone trips on it, or whatever, you cause injury. So I guess that gave me a little more comfort that, I think, as that requirement potentially rolls out, you know, homeowners that have a mortgage have to have homeowner's insurance. And in Massachusetts, and in Massachusetts, we're actually fortunate on this particular question, because Massachusetts insurance companies are required to cover your dog, whether or not you disclose you have a dog. If your dog bites somebody, they can exclude your dog at that point. But other states have, I think, varying degrees of coverage with respect to dogs, and your insurance coverage, according to Bruce anyway, does cover the dog in Bear Cove Park. So I hear you, it's a line-drawing exercise, and, you know, I don't disagree with your analysis.
The problem I have, though, if I could just continue briefly, is that this is a 400-acre public park, and this is almost without precedent. And this, you know, we had, we had people lobbying for this as far away as, you know, the North Shore when this was being debated, and we simply have no way of knowing who is going to decide to avail themselves of the opportunity to run their pet unrestrained. And, you know, the dogs I see in this town are really nice, very cute and cuddly and everything, but I work in Brockton, and in Brockton, you see pit bulls in groups, and they're, they're a different dog, they simply are. And those dogs are as welcome in Bear Cove Park as the labradoodle is.
Well, but I'm just going to make a distinction, which is that, again, anybody who is using this privilege has to go through the permit process, they have to have a tag, they, you know, they have to go through this, this process, and I think one of the things, again, refreshing my memory from watching the Town Meeting proceedings, is that this permit process is intended to make sure that dog owners who want to have this privilege, which we all agree is a privilege, have a little bit of skin in the game, and that we have information. And, you know, so, so, you know, while I recognize that, you know, we did have, you know, Bear Cove Park is a destination from a lot of places, to get this privilege, you have to go to the town clerk's office, you have to get the permit, and again, one of the reasons why we want the permit to be visible and the tag to be on the dog is so that it's very clearly identifiable if, if there is an unleashed dog that is not permitted. And when that happens, that gives the enforcement officer the ability to then ask the question. So-
Yeah, but yet we require a rabies certificate.
Yeah.
And we require other indischer of confirmation as to the representations that are being made in the application process. I don't see this as burdensome.
You know, I, I understand where you're coming from, and I know that this issue in particular is, is one that this board has struggled with. My sense is also that, that none of us here are going to change our minds on this particular aspect of it. I might suggest that we move on to a couple of other things, unless there's anything else that you want to say on this one.
I'm concerned about the exposure that the town is going to incur in the absence of a remedy that insurance will provide to an injured party. That's, that's my concern, I'm genuinely concerned about that.
Oh, I understand.
And I think that if we've got somebody who just signs whatever needs to be signed so they can walk Fido, you know, off-leash in Bear Cove, and they, you know, bite into somebody, and then they're gone, we're going to, we're going to be litigating that plus more. We're going to drive our legal costs up, you know, unnecessarily, this is a self-inflicted wound.
Well, I guess I also look at it and say that, you know, we've talked about both having a one-year look back, and, you know, while it's probably not our intent, you know, this is the body that's, that sets these regulations, and, you know.
Yeah, look, you know what, I also think, coming back to Mary's point, it's imperfect, the whole thing's imperfect, but coming back to Mary's point about trust, and trust of dog owners, so, you know, again, maybe, maybe optimistic to the point of being naive, but, you know, so I have friends, they have two dogs, a chocolate lab and an American bulldog. And the chocolate lab is one of these dogs that all you have to do is look at that dog and it comes back. The American bulldog, whose name is Moose, wouldn't come to save his life, right? Beautiful, athletic, you know, puppy still at two years old, but he's never coming back. So when they walk their dog, Duncan can be off the leash, and Moose has to be on the leash. That's what we're asking, that's what we're asking the off-leash people to consider. You know, I have two dogs, I'd let one off and I'd keep one on, because I can't trust the other one. So, you know, this whole program is about this mutual trust and respect, and respect of the park, right? Like, that's the other element here that we've gone to great lengths to try to map out, is a respect for that saltwater estuary, and that area of critical environmental concern, where we're trusting each other on that. So I hear you. Look, and I've struggled with it too, I-
If you had people in the park that had insurance coverage, then they'd be putting their money where their mouth is, that they would be obeying the rules, they'd have their dog, they'd be highly motivated to keep their dogs in compliance with the regulations they've agreed to submit to. I don't see that existing with somebody who comes in there that doesn't have insurance coverage for their dog, and I'm not going to take that chance.
Okay, I just, I mean, maybe, I'm too much of a rule follower, but when I certify something, I certify it, so.
And the vast majority of people do, Karen. I'm not interested in the 90%, it's the 10% that have me-
Yeah, that are going to get us into trouble.
Like staying up at night here.
Yeah, no. So in this section, if, in this section, I think there are some things that we should, we, we're going to review the indemnification and defense language with counsel, I'd like to do that.
Item three.
Yeah, item three, item five, I do think the certification should include a representation that the insurance would, would make-
So we actually, if you just give us one second, Tom and I worked on this today, and Tom, why don't you, since you did most of this work, why don't you walk them through the highlighted areas? We highlighted, we put the, we put all the responses into categories so you can sort of identify them in groups, and then we highlighted areas that we felt were things that we needed to address. The other ones we looked at and we felt, you know, we didn't need to address them in the same-
Well, I guess, that's kind of what I'm doing.
It's item number four on, on the, this document that we got this afternoon.
Yeah.
I'm just trying to go through this in the categories, but if you look at item, item number four in the text update, that addresses item five on the long list of comments. So Ted and Tom have some proposed language that says, I certify that I have a valid liability insurance policy that will remain unbroken.
Okay, I'm not, I can't, okay, I don't, I think we need to work on that certification, and I'm willing to say that I endorse that concept. I can't, I feel like it's kind of hard on the fly to, I think the certification-
We don't want to give you, we don't want to monitor the document here, we just wanted to tell you what these points are and what we're doing about them, and I think that'll answer your question if we can, because I, I'll just take the first one. You know, it's a permitting section request, they wanted to remove to indemnify and substitute to indemnify, so we're asking counsel that question, and we're reviewing it with them to make sure that they feel comfortable with it. The liability certification, you know, we're asking that the certification indicate that it be unbroken during the time of the permit, so that we don't get a statement that says, I have insurance, which was true, but my insurance lapsed a month, and you're going to maintain it for the time that you have it.
Right.
And item five, you know, we need to clarify that comment about the owner's fine $50 is the implication, dog must be removed, immediately removed from the park, and so Tom has a call in to counsel to clarify that comment. You want to add to that?
Yeah, so I have, I've had some of the preliminary conversations with counsel on some of these. The defendant indemnify clause, you know, the defend, he said, sure, it can be in there, we may not use it.
Right.
We may not need it, we would want the insurance company to defend us, but can't hurt to have it as an option. But we didn't get, I didn't, I don't have a written opinion from him on that, but-
I understand the process, you know, we're doing this this afternoon, we're trying to talk to counsel, and so the ability to manage the document and get it to you in that time period was virtually impossible.
No, I understand that, I guess what I'm, I'm saying tonight is, I'd like to agree conceptually to what these, these sort of legal, to tightening the language to address these concepts.
That's what we would hope.
Okay, because I think, I guess what I'm, it's hard to agree to this language on the fly.
Absolutely. So the next one might be a better example, minimum league age, minimum legal age for a permit application.
I'm not interested in that. I think, if you've got to come in and certify the insurance, right? Yeah.
Your ability to contract in the Commonwealth, it's 18, so that's what we're recommending. I mean, if that's not what you want to do, you know, let us know, but we thought if we did no age, then, you know, we could have a contract with someone who don't have a legal authority to contract, so.
Okay.
I don't think-
I, yeah, I think it's, whatever.
The next section, grammar and language, again, you know, we've asked Legal to review comment 15, you see that in here, and we've asked Legal to review deleting this section. We thought they were reasonable that we should have counsel review them, and we will. We don't think they produce material changes to the program, but we think they would be grammatically correct or language-wise correct. Under the mapping area-
I'd like to go back because the numbers- I'd like to go back because number 18, which is section 2.9, which is the definition of unwelcome greeting, we got a good amount of feedback that, as it's written, it leaves the possibility for sort of accidental, any sort of accidental thing to be kind of contact. And I agree with that. I think that that language leaves the possibility for, you know, "I'm walking down a path, a dog brushes my leg, and I'm filing a complaint," and that's not what's intended. I went back and looked in the Bear Cove website at their regulations, and I have so many papers here, that there is actually, on the Bear Cove website, there is sort of a, there's a description there that talks to kind of this unwelcome greeting. And I know I have it here in this pile, but I can't put my hands on it. I'm looking at it and saying, if it's on the Bear Cove Park website, and this is the language that we've all used for many years as we've been in Bear Cove Park, let's just use that language. Because I'm really not interested in, you know, "A dog brushed against me and I didn't want it to." I do think that this language is a little problematic.
Some parts of it.
Well, just number nine, it says, "Jumping, humping, or other unwanted contact by a dog against a person." I just, you know, and I'm looking for a little bit of, you know, I think there needs, I think there needs to be a little bit of a reasonableness test sort of put on this, right?
It does, but, you know, I'm hoping that a lot of that reasonableness will be in the administration of the complaints. The complaints are not going to be administered independently, you know, like by nobody. They're gonna be administered by that woman over there, sitting in the second row. Leslie Badger, our animal control officer, will deal with these. And I think, I'm just guessing, that if somebody filed a complaint and your investigation revealed that the complaint that said the dog brushed against my leg, that would probably close out that complaint. Just guessing.
Did you say you found the language?
Yes.
Okay.
So, I just want to say that, you know, we don't, this is not gonna be completely self-reporting. Ultimately, we're gonna have to interject.
I'm just gonna say, "Dog under control," I just found it. "Dogs should not be allowed to encounter persons or pets and significantly interfere with the activity they're involved in, such as walking, running, or cycling, unless invited by said person." So, it's already there. It's been there, we've used it for a long time, everybody's used to it. I'd just like to use, I'd like that language to be unwelcome greeting in the regs.
Makes sense to me.
Thank you.
Continuing on, if you go into the second section, map-related, is the point we wanted to draw your attention to, item 30, restricted areas. There was a question about having a restricted access area to the water at Indian Point. Tom spoke with conservation. I guess they went down and looked at it, and conservation felt that that area was too narrow.
So, there were several, there are several access points to the water down by Indian Point. They're all relatively narrow, 30 to 50 feet wide, there's three of them, I believe. And all three of them are closely bordered by very sensitive salt marsh, which you don't see up at the other water access point by the green dock house. And the fear is that a dog could wander off of the gravel area that would look like an access point to water and into the sensitive, more easily into the sensitive salt marsh area. So, I'm recommending, through discussions with others, that that not be part of the process.
Just so I can get a visual of this, Indian Point, if I'm standing with my back to the green dock house, Indian Point's kind of off to the...
If you're looking at your map...
The furthest point...
Map. Right here. It's down the very bottom.
Oh, oh, oh.
Southernmost point.
Okay. Yep, thank you.
And actually, one of the things I've been doing with the map, I actually got a printout of what was passed out at town meeting. So, one of the things that we've also been doing here, again, because we're really trying hard to stick with what was done at town meeting, is to compare these two maps to see, are we kind of doing the same thing? And we, really, there don't appear to be a lot of...
From a programmatic standpoint, the concepts are the same.
Correct. I mean, we wanted to address the point because it was a specific point about creating more access and why we didn't think we could do it. Go on?
Please, thank you.
Thirty-five, only to be allowed access to the beach restricted point, but once they're on the beach, can the dogs enter the back river along its length? And the answer to that is...
So, the, again, after speaking with conservation and Bear Cove Park, et cetera, if you look at the map that I placed on top of your packet tonight, the area around the water access point has been relabeled to 50-feet water access point, but that's an updated label. And if you look just to the water side of that arrow, you'll see there's a long, very thin green strip along the water side with, inside the restricted area. What that's trying to denote is that you would access the point through the 50-foot water access point, and then have access to upwards of an eighth or a quarter mile, some long stretch of beach between the piers.
Okay.
It was nearly a thousand feet.
So, the answer to the question is, once they're on the beach, the dogs can enter the back river along it.
That's right. They can't go back up over the embankment.
Correct. They gotta use the access point, but once they get down to the beach, they can run along the beach area.
And part of the reason for the access point, because we've also gotten a lot of comments about the access point, so part of the reason for the access point, and I appreciate, I walked the park a few days ago with Ted Matthews, I appreciate your time, and frankly, the water access was one of the things I really wanted to look at. So, the access point is meant, I mean, you guys walk there, you know, that beach is severely deteriorated and eroded, right? It's almost like a cliff in some spots. And so I think what we're trying to do is find an access point that's not gonna further degrade that cliff area and allow people kind of a safe path down to the beach. And then, so it was certainly my understanding that once you're down there, you know, your dog would have the ability to swim and walk, you know, along that beach area.
And that's the case now.
And so I get it, like...
That's my recommendation.
And I get it, right? That if there's a bunch of people trying to access the water at the same time, you're absolutely right, that it's a, you know, relatively speaking, narrow pathway. But, you know, if people are kind of coming and going at an intermittent pace, you know, I think you're just gonna have to take turns kind of going through that area. But that's the reason for it.
And again, that's been vetted with the Bear Cove Park Committee and Ted and Conservation Department.
The last comment in that section, item 36, was a request for clarification. It looks as though the main tarmac trail is also seasonally restricted, and that's not the case.
So, this was, this was actually, I have that in there, that's the specific request we received. However, I think it went to a larger point, that the trail network was unclear as to what's restricted and what isn't. And so what we've done is, in a proposed version of this map, that's the one on top, we've changed the coloring scheme and the hatching pattern scheme of the lines that make up the trails, to make it clearer what's an unrestricted trail, what's a seasonally restricted trail, and what's a permanently restricted trail. So I think that's clear on the map.
Okay.
Some things that we're still working on, in the appeal process, you know, we don't have clarity here on the appeal of a license revocation. Appeal process for a violation is standard, it would be Hingham District Court. But if we have to revoke a license, we have to develop an appeal process for that. Since we haven't actually granted a license yet, we thought you might give us a little bit of time to come up with a way to revoke it, if we have to have that unfortunate situation. Hopefully, not before the 15th, because that's when we're gonna hopefully outline this in the first place. So, I'm pretty confident we will not be in a process or need to revoke prior to issuing any. So, if you could just give us some time. The council's given us an issue on whether or not we should adopt a law process or some other process for that. And we'll give that to you as soon as we have it.
Could you go back to the question of fees? Because I know this is something that we've been interested in, the audience has been interested in, that we got a lot of different feedback about whether or not to charge a fee for the permit.
Sure. So, we got about 12 comments on fees and fines. We didn't feel that we would add any of these or modify any of these to the program. But we're not charging fees for the program. We're not charging fees for people utilizing the service, primarily because of council's opinion that that would erode our protection under the recreational use statute. And it would be a clear degradation. There are others that are less clear and debatable, and everybody has an opinion on those, but that would be a clear one, in council's opinion. And I do understand that people have found case laws that say it's not. So, you guys asked me to retain counsel, we give you counsel, it's the person you've hired, and they gave you an opinion. They've studied case law, including the case law that we saw that said it wasn't a problem. But the overriding case law and the opinion of your town council is that charging a fee would impact our ability to defend under the recreational use statute, and not charging it would. Now, there's some caveats to that about how you could do it this way, you could do it that way, you could charge a fee, but then you could have to allocate the cost immediately to a specific function, and if you didn't do it the right way, you'd just trip yourself up. There's not enough money here in this process. We just told you it's $7,500, we think, to open the program up annually. If a printer's $3,500, I can't believe this is an ongoing expense for $100 million a year organization. To take the risk that you would lose for that small amount, the protection of that statute seems, you know, not prudent to me.
So, the one thing I did ask was, notwithstanding all of that, just in terms of the metrics and the information gathering, that we, you know, that we do, that we do keep an eye out on what we believe will be recurring costs, and in part, you know, to be responsive to the advisory committee on this point, but just in part to inform ourselves about the recurring costs. You know, as Ted said, there are, there is a, there is an exception to the recreational, to the, negating the protection of the recreational use statute for causal expenses, that, under case law, I think is a pretty tight calculation, notwithstanding that, you know, I think we're doing this right, let's keep our eye on how much it's costing us.
Yeah, absolutely. You know, a big part of that concern is, we have no idea how many permits we're gonna issue, or in that case, so...
We may come back to you in a recommendation in a year that, yeah, these are the costs, and, you know, we're in a budget-cutting mode of motion, and it's too much, we need to charge a fee for it. And then you guys can make the decision as to whether or not, you know, the risk of that exemption that you have under the law is worth the fee. Right now, what I'm saying is, based on these dollars, it doesn't appear that really asking council to spend three hours on it would probably exceed our costs of the program. So, I, I mean, you know, any litigation or any aspect would be much more than that. So, that's how we made that decision.
I also don't want to be in a situation where we're collecting money and saying, "Oh, we gotta spend all this in order to make sure that we maintain the status." That just kind of, you know, I think we spend money in this town when we, you know, when things are justified and they're needed, and maintaining that...
We've always done a pretty good job of tracking our costs. We'll do that, and this is a clear area for you guys to review in your one-year look back, and I think it'll be pretty obvious at that point in time, whether or not we can afford this, or whether or not we want to charge for it. In terms of the fines, you know, I mean, we thought the fines were reasonably appropriate when we reviewed it with the police chief, and he felt comfortable with it. I don't have any more input than that.
Yeah, you know, and I went back, I looked at this, you know, there were people that were sort of saying, "Gosh, some of these seem kind of excessive, I have trouble with it." You know, I went back and looked, and at town meeting, there was talk about fines, I think in Katie Sutton's comments, she talked about $50. But I have to say, too, reading like on social media and things, when on November 1st, we leashed all the dogs, there were enough people, you know, writing into social media saying, "I'd gladly pay $50 to get caught." So, if we want to make this thing work, you know, if you go into the Green Dock building and you disrupt, you know, some things that people have put a lot of time and effort into, you know, you're gonna pay more than that. Again, you know, I think we do a one-year look back and we see where things are, but at this stage, to me, there are some degrees of severity that, you know, that this is about accountability for, it's part of the whole accountability package.
So, I skipped over the areas that we had no comments for you administratively, but I'm happy to talk about any one you'd like. Voice control, fenced-in dog park questions, leashes, number of dogs per walker. We didn't address any of those. We looked at them, we reviewed them, and, you know, Tom's opinion and my opinion was they don't, those comments don't arise to the level that we'd want to make changes to the program structure.
I know there were a couple of comments, maybe we could just speak to this for benefit of the public, too, that we did get, we did get some comments, again, different ends, about how close a dog has to be in proximity to its owner or walker. And right now, the regulations say 40 feet and within sight.
Right now, you have to be within sight and then within sight, within 40.
And no more than 40 feet.
No more than 40 feet.
And for example, one of the questions was, at DCR parks, it's 100 feet. Okay, that's, but we met with a group, we met with a police chief, we met with some stakeholders, these are the things we agreed to as we went through this. So, I didn't see any compelling reason to make these changes. I'm not suggesting that there isn't, I just didn't see it from what I saw.
Yeah, and I guess, you know, from my standpoint on that, we had to pick a number, I don't know, 40, 50-ish, right? You know, I'm assuming will be reasonable. You obviously have to see your dog, and your dog has to be able to hear you for it to be under voice control, right? I think the other thing to kind of keep in mind when I was looking at, okay, well, how does this work in other parks, and how far away can dogs be in other parks? So, you know, the numbers and kinds of passive recreational activities that take place in Bear Cove Park, on those trails, and in some parks, those trails are kind of narrow, is a lot. I think it's a different kind of park than many of the DCR properties that we're talking about, right? So, again, we're in confined spaces with people riding bikes, scootering, walking their dogs, running. So, you know, to me, it argues for a little bit of a tighter control area. You know, we'll be out there with a tape measure. No, we want you to cooperate on this. We want your, you know, if you, if there's a biker coming along and your dog likes bikes, then, you know, we want you to be able to call your dog back. That's what we're saying. So, anyway, I think this is a really, as we all, you know, I think we all know, we all appreciate, right? This is a really unique property. And so, some of the rules that may be applicable in other recreational areas just don't fit as well here, and that's why I think we try to take some care with this one.
And I just want to speak to one other thing about voice control, because in, there was an item that a couple people commented on, which is that an enforcement officer at any time may request that a walker demonstrate voice control. And I think there was, you know, a little bit of concern of, you know, is, you know, could that sort of happen at any time? I think my view would be that if there is, if in the enforcement officer's mind, it appears that the dog may not be under voice control, that the enforcement officer would say, you know, "Call your dog over." I don't see the enforcement officer, "Up, here comes another person around the corner, I'm gonna, you know, I'm gonna ask them." To me, this, again, sort of relies on if something there appears that it could be problematic, you know, that's when, that's when the enforcement officer would ask to demonstrate voice control.
I had a different view.
Okay.
I felt that that should be determined by the animal control officer prior to the permit being issued.
And you weren't alone, there were other people.
That seemed to got lost in the shuffle, but...
Well, we got a lot of comments on that, though. And there are, I mean, there are definitely, somebody passed along something from Denver, I think in Denver, if you want to walk your dog off-leash, you have to demonstrate that your dog can walk off-leash. We frankly got comments that said, from the 90% of folk responsible off-leash dog walkers, we got comments that said, "Hey, you're dooming us to fail because you're allowing these 10% crazy people to come walk their dog without having to demonstrate that their dog actually is under voice control." So, again, sorry. I'm glad I'm sitting, I'm glad you're between us.
Well, you know, and I guess what, you know...
But I mean, there's a logic there that's undeniable. If you think your dog is subject to voice control, prove it. It's a privilege, it's not a right.
I hear ya. I, you know, I look at a lot of this, and I think, you know, I go back to the word that the Sher Bear Cove group began a lot of this with, which is... that, that the Sher Bearcove Group began a lot of this with, which is compromise, and I.
I still am prepared to compromise and make this unanimous, but I am very strong in this certificate. The other stuff, I'll, I'll leave that up to you guys.
Well, let's finish.
Would you like me to go on?
Yes, please.
Okay, so unless there's any questions in the other areas, I'll jump to the highlighted ones. Schedule-related categories, the one-year look back, we want to clarify for that. I know that there was some conversations about May, but we'd really like the one-year look back to be July. We're planning on implementing for July 15th, so we'd rather not do, you know, we'd rather do that.
Well, so, let's see, let's say, all right, so we get 12 months of data, right? So if we have this, we have this 12-month look back, we'd have that data.
And you'd look at it in September.
Okay, that's what I was going to ask.
So one of the things I'm going to try to give you is, give us the time to actually get the data, collate it, and, I mean, I know we're trying to change the rule-making process that we have here, and it's a great change, but as we talked about earlier, you got to give us time to collate that data so we can meaningfully look at it. I mean, I know that was hard for you guys, because we were finishing up today at 2 o'clock still looking at data, and that makes it hard for you to make policy decisions. So I want to make sure that we, we adequately give time to the process so that we can give you what you need to do your work.
Well, and so I guess what I would say as part of that, what I would envision would also be involving stakeholders, like we did in the development of this, in helping to analyze that, analyze that data, right?
Absolutely. I would start with a similar group of stakeholders analyzing it to make sure there weren't any new stakeholders that I've missed. And we start analyzing the data, and then ultimately come back with a report to the board of selection.
Okay, okay.
But I'm looking at trying to do that in July, August, which traditionally are slower periods of time.
So far, not so much. Okay.
So then if we flip to the other categories, we highlighted this, we thought it was important. Who does one call to report a violation? You do not call 911 unless it's a medical or a physical emergency of some type. So, you know, if a dog brushes by you and you have a complaint and no one's been injured, we don't want you calling 911. We want you to call the animal control officer, and not the police business line either. So, and we're going to clarify that really clearly, so that we make, you know, crystal clear, we, we don't want the 911 calls to get inundated through this aspect.
And can we, well, maybe you're going to get to this, but there was, there are also several comments about the content of the complaint.
That's the next one.
Okay.
Right on it. So we felt this was really important to highlight. Anyone issuing a complaint must be required to provide their name, address, contact information, along with the reason for the complaint, the dog license number, and the time and place of the incident. So we've modified this a little bit to include, we want the complainant, the person who is making the complaint, to provide their name, their address, and their contact information, and a description of the complaint. They don't need to provide the dog license number. They might not know it. The dog could have run away. So we're not going to give them that. Obviously, we want the time and place of the incident. All the information typical of an incident so that we can report it. The one key area here is that we're asking name, address, contact information. We don't want to process anonymous complaints. And we would ask that you support that, because we think that will completely skew the data as we look through this process.
I would just ask that, I think that it would be helpful if you have the license information for the dog. Again, I just think about the time to.
Of course. I just don't want to require it.
Yeah.
And I don't want to say we're not going to process your complaint if you don't have it.
Absolutely. But let's make sure there's like a field for it, because that'll just make it easier.
Absolutely.
You think of online forms that we've all filled out. Some fields are required, others aren't.
Yeah, I mean, to me, if there, if you can't put, if you're not going to put your name and address on it, it's, it's not, we're not going to even take it up. So. Can, can the public?
And that was really.
We've closed this for, for comments.
And that was really all of the 90 comments that we went through.
There was, there was one other one that I, I didn't see on here, but I wrote, it may be there, apologize, but there was a question about whether, you know, to, there was a concern about special events on odd-numbered days that might, that might cause the off-leashing privileges to be suspended, whether it's, you know, a track meet with Notre Dame or something like that. You know, you know, again, my view here, I'm kind of going back to the trust thing and saying, I'm going to trust the Bearcove Park Committee is going to, you know, they've got a process that you have to go through to have events. I don't think there are a whole lot of them. I think if we, if we find that we get to a circumstance where there are more of them, and they're happening on odd-numbered days, we'll deal with that. But I think, again, there's, there's a trust element in here, and I trust the good faith effort of the Bearcove Park Committee to, to implement this. And then I also realize that some of those events are out of their control on the timing of them.
And my, my sense of that would be that the, that the restriction would apply during the timing of the event, or, you know, some window before and after, but it's not because Notre Dame had a track meet there in the morning doesn't take the whole day offline. It's just, it's just that period of time.
Correct.
And, you know, like I think I said last time around, it restricts all of our use, regardless of what it is, so.
And the Bearcove Park Committee, they have a process where there's 30 days. It has to go to a meeting, it has to get approved, information will be posted. So again, in the one-year look back, if we see that, that there's something different we need to do, that was the only other one that I.
I had two, and maybe we've already said it, but there were questions about clarifying the seasonal restriction. Were we going to put that in the?
The seasonal restriction, if you look on your new map, on the bottom right, on the, on the recommended map.
Okay.
Or bottom left, excuse me. Off-leash dogs are not permitted on or in restricted trail areas shown in red, I'm sorry, the second to last. Off-leash dogs are not permitted on or in seasonally restricted areas shown in yellow, April 1st through August 31st of each year.
Okay. And what I understood when I walked it, because I was like, okay, so if I'm walking there, do I have to have this map to know what color I'm in and where I am? And so what I, what I did with, when I walked it with Ted was, it seemed like Scott, you were going to manage the mowing, so that certain meadows are going to be left odd-mowed where there were nesting birds, and so it's a cue to you guys that you got to have your dog on the leash there. And sometimes on one side of the road, there'd be off-leash area, off-leash meadows, off-leash fields, and, and I think, I think you were purposeful in trying to designate some of those areas, because that's actually, those are fun areas for the dogs to be, but you'll, you'll be able to know, because some areas will be unmoaned, and those areas.
If you don't mind if I just jump in real quick.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
The implementation plan contemplated some 200 signs.
Okay.
That will be, you know, temporary laminated signs that will have to be attached to trees and whatnot throughout the park, denoting exactly where.
Right. But, you know, I mean, in addition to that, I think just the visual cue of seeing the longer grass, because, and I, right, I think we'll all get used to this, but, yeah, to, yeah, okay.
Did you have one other thing? I'm mindful of our time.
Oh, I did have one other thing. Just the leash length. So I think it's 15 feet? Is that the leash length? In the, so, anyway, we, we had some comments saying, the leash length, what?
No, it is 15, yeah.
So we had some comments saying, we thought the.
Six.
It's six?
No, it's 15, but we had comments. They wanted a limited.
So, so people were saying, hey, the 15-foot leash was put in there when, when the off-leash program concluded. So it was supposed to sort of mimic the dog having a greater run length. And people are saying, hey, you know, now that you have odd days off-leash, shouldn't you go to a standard leash length on the days you're leashing your dog? Because if I'm running by or biking by, I can sort of count on that length. And I don't know what, I don't know, maybe it's too late to consider that point, but it made some sense to me, reducing the leash, leash length.
Makes sense to me.
I'd leave it alone, but I, I, okay, I, I think there are a lot of people, I mean, there are people in there with different lengths of leashes and, you know, people have the retractable.
Well, it's principally, I think, those, yeah, I think it's principally those spoolings, right, right, okay, all right. I mean.
So we also gave you another memo with this that talked about what we were hoping to get from you tonight. We plan on implementing so that people can get permits on July 15th and after. We need some kind of an approval for you to do that tonight, because we can't spin up the permits if you vote this on the meeting of the 13th, for example. But yet, we also realize that you don't have an agreement in place without some of these modifications. So we were hoping to get some level of consensus or vote to proceed with purchasing the equipment to implement the plan, as we've talked about, and bring back to you the final edited version of this with your changes incorporated for the 13th.
I tell you what, I, I don't know if we can do this, but I would like to vote as much of this tonight. I just, you know, it's, we said we were going to, we've gone along this path, and I, I realize there are a few outstanding items, but at the same time, not voting on this to me tonight doesn't feel right.
Well, so I think the issue is, right, is, do we vote on it substantially in the form presented, with the understanding from us and the public that the amendments and the language tightening and the legal analysis would be conducted after and reported out at our meeting in July?
See, I want to lock what we can. You know, I, I feel like there's a lot in here that we can lock, and I just, I don't want to have this whole conversation again in a couple of weeks. I, I don't want more stuff to come up. I, I think we all are pretty decided on things, sort of how we vote. What I would love to do, if we can, is vote and lock everything that we can, with the understanding that there are a couple of pieces that, you know, the, the appeal process, we can't, but I, I want to do more than just kind of vote this in principle, if possible. I feel like it leaves too many things open.
Tell us what, you know, I, I don't, I don't know how to do that. I mean, I think we could vote the appeals process separately. I think that, I think the other question that's on the table, really, if I heard Paul correctly, is the insurance certification. So, you know, if that's the thing that's standing in between a 3-0 vote and a 2-1 vote, you know, I think we ought, we ought to, we ought to think about that. You know, how onerous, how onerous would it be to require the provision of, it's just the front page of your insurance policy, right?
Deck page.
Now, excuse me, we're, you know, I, I just, if we open it up, it's going to get open and.
That page of.
Please.
Well, all, all that page, I mean, it shows you're insured, right? That's all I care about. That, that's all I care about. Because if you're insured in Massachusetts, unless you have a dog exclusion, you're insured. And even a tenant's policy, just that very front page, it just shows you're insured. That's all I care about.
That's it. That's all I'm looking for.
I mean, I, you know, so the question for the administrators is, we were concerned, I was concerned about the administrative burden of filing that.
Put it all together in one file.
For the staple?
Yeah. If we, if we get 100.
I'll buy the staples.
If we get 100 or 200 applications, or 300 or 400, probably no big issue. If we get 5,000, we'll have to talk to you about it next year. Like, we'll have to talk about everything. I, I think the comments I've raised you in the past are more on, on the, the cover sheet of the page, is the fact that it's a public record, and the fact that, you know, I could be required to provide it to people. And so that's an issue.
So what about, wait a minute, all right, so what about this? I don't know. What about this? What about if I came with the front page, I certified, I have to show it, but I take it home?
So as long as we could document some part of that.
It's like showing my, it's like showing my driver's license.
So we could note a policy number, or we could note something like that.
But do we want to note a policy? I, frankly, I don't want any town knowing my insurance policy number.
Why can't it be like showing your, you know, you show your driver's license and you're good?
Yeah, like that, that, you know, that the checkbox on the form is for the person in the town clerk to check that they saw, you know.
If, if you get a permit in this town to do any kind of building, you typically have to come up with some kind of insurance. I mean, having insurance as a condition of a permit is not a novel concept.
Well, I think what we're, I think what we're trying to do here is to, is to find some middle ground here, which is that if, if your concern is the existence of a policy, whether someone has one, if you take Karen's idea and you come in and you show the front page of your policy, but no information.
I show my driver's license.
No information is recorded, the box is checked on the application, and the individual takes it home with them, does, does that, does that satisfy your, would, would that satisfy your concern?
I think I'd be satisfied if I knew the policy number and the operative dates.
You mean that the.
I think that's very fair.
That the town clerk would have to look at a policy.
There's no privacy issue there.
I, I don't know. What do, what do you think?
I mean, I can see, I can see the operative date, but then that means, you know, we're saying, does that mean someone's got to come in every year? And even though the permit gets extended, they've got to come in every year and update that insurance piece, right? Because, because my insurance rate is only for the year, so.
As is mine.
Right.
And there are some things I do annually. I go to the highway department and get a sticker.
Sticker, yep.
And I have to show my papers, and they record information off it. I'm sure that's public record. There are people going up there making FOIA requests for sticker information.
You might be surprised. All right, I would go, I would, I would, I would add a requirement that, that a permit, a person requesting a permit has to show the declaration page of their policy, and I would say that the town clerk should list the operative date of the policy, because we are saying that, that the person is certifying that they're going to keep that insurance policy up to date. So they've got to, in order for their permit to continue to be valid, they've got to come in and update it. So they got to bring, so, so if my insurance renews in January, I got to come in in January with the deck page, right?
Well, let me ask you, because with a, with a Hingham resident, what I believe is that the permit runs the length of your rabies license, which is like three years. So right now, if I get a permit, it's good for three years. With what you're proposing, that means that I have to come in every year.
Right. Because, because what I was asking you to certify.
Right.
Anyway, was that your insurance was good.
Yeah.
So I guess the question is, you know.
So that would be, that would mean that I'd be making three trips to the town clerk's office instead of one during that time. And if I'm a non-Hingham resident, it's, it's annually.
Anyway, anyway.
So.
Just combine it with the day you go to the park.
It would.
I mean, look, if, if we're saying this is an important component of the program, an important piece of the public safety part of it, and Paul's saying, which I don't disagree with, that we need more certainty that that piece can be met, then, you know, the question is, do they do it once, and do they do it again three years later when they renew their permit? You know, and then do we trust the Hingham people in the meantime, because they've got three years? Or do they have to come in every year and check off? I, I guess I, I don't know.
Probably, I think we.
I don't, I don't see coming in the town clerk's office once a year to just reaffirm existence of coverage to, to walk their animal that's subject to strict liability in a public park is onerous or burdensome.
Yeah, well, then, would you just make the annual for both, for everybody, then?
Sure, yeah. Sauce for the goose.
Because if, you know, if I have a three-year, right?
Right, right, right.
If I have a three-year permit, I'm not going to kind of remember and take the initiative. And it seems to me, it seems to me that if we're going to do something like this, it would, everybody's experience, whether they live in or outside of Hingham, they should have a consistent experience.
Sure. Just make it one year for everybody.
So that would be one year.
Okay, so one year, show you, and you got to come in with a proof, proof of insurance, and, and we note the effective date of that, right?
Yeah.
All right. And you can get behind the rest of this?
I told you I would.
I don't, I don't.
I grit my teeth, Mary. I bit my teeth, Mary.
I know.
I bit my teeth.
Look, I think in a compromise, right, nobody gets exactly what they're looking for.
Let's just keep moving.
All right. So, how about this for the approval?
Okay.
The only thing that seems to be completely, something that we haven't reviewed at all is the appeals process.
Correct, and you can't vote in appeals process tonight unless someone's going to quickly spin up one and we're all going to review it instantly without council's opinion. I wouldn't recommend. So, we just can't get to the appeal process, which I understand that we want to do it all, but we're not going to have to deal with the appeal process prior to issuing the first permit.
Okay, but all I'm saying is, can we approve, do we feel comfortable approving the off-leash dog walking program in substantially the form submitted, understanding that there will be clarification of the insurance requirement as well as the other highlighted remarks that you made that are part of our minutes?
Correct. I mean, we're comfortable with that. We don't want to see this document change, and we hope your conversation on the 13th is, here's a document, we've reviewed it, thank you very much, and a fairly, you know, quick vote on it. We don't expect to have to do this process again. We don't see those kind of changes. These things are fairly de minimis, I would say, other than the issues you've already covered at length, and the appeal process. And that might take you a little more time to discuss at that time.
I'm good with that.
I'm ready.
Okay, would someone want to make a motion then?
Oh, boy.
I'll second it.
I move to accept the Bear Cove Park off-leash walking program, dog walking program, subject to, in substantially the form presented tonight and subject to the changes outlined tonight.
Second.
Any further discussion?
No.
To take effect, to take effect, July, right?
July.
To take effect, July 15th?
Barring any unforeseen circumstances in our procurement of the necessary tools, which I told you last time that I hadn't started that process yet because I wanted to know what this was going to happen. I'll know that tomorrow.
How about intended to take effect?
Absolutely.
By July 15, 2017.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Thank you, everybody.
Thanks for bearing with us.
Thanks for coming. Okay, we're going to move along with our agenda because we're about 45 minutes behind. So, if you're going to, if you're going to stay with us, please do. If you're going to head out, could you head out into the hall quickly? Next on the agenda is the Lincoln Building sidewalk closing permit.
Do we have representatives from the Lincoln Building here?
Thanks for coming. Thank you for coming. Thanks, Leslie. Thanks for being here. Thank you.
Thank you.
All of the proposed map changes were part of that, right?
Yeah, whatever.
Do we have anybody here from?
We do, they're coming in.
Oh, okay, great.
Let's wing out.
Ted, can you turn on the AC a little bit?
Yes.
Like I'm in an oven.
It may not be working, Ted, Paul. There's a broken, it's a broken heat bump out there.
It'll be fixed before you buy one of them.
Ted or Tom, do you want to sort of set this up?
Sure. You're here tonight on this matter to approve a sidewalk opening permit for the property owners who own the former Lincoln Building, or the Lincoln Building, I guess.
It was former.
And as part of their project that's moved through the permitting process, this is your stage to approve or make conditions relative to the project. Staff met with, second floor, Tom, myself, met with the Downtown Association earlier this week, and the applicants to sort of go over the construction process of what's going to transpire here, and I think they can walk you through that. We were very comfortable with what we heard, and we have some issues surrounding the trees. At a later point in time, we'll be talking to you about the tunnel cap. We can certainly share with you tonight what we've discussed with the applicant and what they've agreed to, but you'll have that later as an agreement to be voted on. So, you want to get an overview of the project from them and what they intend to do during the construction phase and why they need the sidewalk opening permit? Steve?
Good evening. I'm Steve Myers, 73 South Street. I'm the architect on the project. I'm joined with Matt Falconeri from Falconeri Construction, the general contractor, and Charlene Flynn, the representing ownership of the property. Like many in the room here, I too would like to see the opening that's in the ground, filled with a robust activity of construction, as we hope to move forward soon. We are before you tonight to seek the approval of a sidewalk closing related to the rebuilding of the Lincoln Buildings. We have described this project in three phases, the excavation phase, preliminary, framing, and interior finishes phase. The early phases of the project are the most arduous for the construction effort, including the site excavation work, the foundation work, and the framing. And these phases are the most impactful for the surrounding site. In the later phases, as public safety is truly established, it is our intent to rebuild a level walkway surface and create a protected cover walkway for the sidewalks around the site. The request for the sidewalk closures is intended for the early foundation and framing phases only to ensure pedestrian safety and clearly define the construction barrier. We have been diligently working with police, fire, Department of Public Works, and the building department on this topic, and we firmly believe we have their support on this approach. We have also had an initial meeting with the Downtown Association to coordinate timing of closures and plan to have continued discussions with them for coordination of their calendar and events. We initially intend to start this, we initially intended to start this project earlier in the year, but have been flexible with the town request to keep the site and the streets clear around the timing of the Fourth of July road race. We fully intend to start the site mobilization shortly after that event. It is our intent to keep noise disturbance to a minimum as far as possible in a construction zone. It is our intention to keep dust control efforts in place as best as possible with water spray machines. So, specifically, as you see in the handout you have or at the board, we have divided the plan into a couple zones that, for our sidewalk closure, Zone A, the large circle with A, and the red arrow is for a fully closed street front. The idea is to put a Jersey barrier there permanent in, for the, permanent in a blockade that'll establish a barrier that reads sidewalk closed and follow pedestrian route. In the north corridor, the intent is to divert the footpath down the brick walkway. In Zone B, the two blue arrows, we will establish a barrier on the opposite side of the street that says crosswalk closed, and this will divert foot traffic laterally down and away from the construction site. That's it for our presentation. We thank you for your consideration, and we'll take specific questions.
You have a letter in your file from the police chief who joined us at the meeting. I know that the chief's concern, as was expressed also by the fire department, was that Main Street not be closed to traffic at any point in time, and it is not throughout this project. South Street will be closed, one lane of traffic during certain points of time during their construction process as they have to access the utilities in the street. But there will be no disruption of Main Street and break of traffic throughout the entire project.
Could, Mr. Myers, I don't know if you could speak to it, but once this will be closed off, when do you envision the sidewalk opening back up? And could you come up to the mic so that?
Hi, Matt Falconeri, Falconeri Construction. So, as Steve mentioned, we're basically, to summarize the job, you can kind of simplify it into three separate phases. First phase being a lot of the heavy lifting in terms of trucks and excavators. So, it's the foundation excavation and getting that foundation installed. I'm projecting that that's going to take approximately, roughly from now, from July 5th until shortly after Labor Day, that heavy lifting portion will be complete. Phase two is when we start to go vertical with the building. It is a steel structure, so we're going to have a crane parked along South Street and go in vertical with steel and wood framing as well. So, basically, the excavation portion is three to four months, and then phase two of going vertical will probably terminate five months beyond that, which puts us in the fall. So, really, I don't see it being safe for pedestrians until later in the fall.
So, will that be like November, December?
October, November.
Okay. I'm just thinking about our downtown merchants and their reliance on the fourth quarter for their business and just, and I understand and appreciate that you are sensitive to the July 5th window. I realize that that's, you know, you're kind of getting squeezed in both directions.
We are, and we have met with them. We have a rough outline of their key dates for sidewalk sales and things of that nature. The next, they've made it very abundantly clear that that fourth quarter is their busiest time, and obviously, Christmas on the square is the big target to get these sidewalks groomed and safe.
Yeah, well, and it's also, you know, if there's a crane in the street and things parking, and you'll have a number of people who will say, I'm not going to go down to the square because, you know, there's all this going on.
Yeah, before, right, in terms of general traffic, you're saying you're allowing those key events. Yeah, so, I mean, the crane is going to be there weekdays.
How big is it?
Pardon me?
How big is the crane?
I am not sure. So, the steel erection portion is when we're going to have to have that there, and that's going to take probably eight weeks, starting right after Labor Day. So, I think it's going to be before a lot of the, you know, the seasonal stuff.
And you're hauling stuff off-site, so you're going to have big dump trucks down there too?
That's all going to be done before Labor Day. That's all phase one.
But that's true, right? You're going to have big dump truck traffic?
Absolutely, yes.
Okay. And that'll be along the South Street corridor?
That's our ten.
What's the story with the cistern?
Cistern, we found a cement floor at the bottom, and, yeah, so it's just been filled with-
Eight?
Pardon?
How old is it?
Undetermined.
And you're going to have an excavator in the hole?
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Sorry.
Excuse me just a moment.
Sorry.
And you're going to have a dump truck in there as well, taking the debris out?
We're going to determine, well, we have to see how deep we're going. It's undetermined until we get out there with a geotechnical engineer witnessing how deep we're going.
Do you have to do any kind of borings or anything?
We've done all the borings.
Okay.
All that's behind us.
Okay. And the reason you're blocking off the sidewalk on Main Street is why? Too close to the construction site?
Yeah.
Yeah?
It's right there.
Does that safety concern continue indefinitely until the building is fully assembled?
Okay, so at the end of phase two, when we're successfully all the way to the roof, it has a concrete roof, which is fairly unorthodox.
Okay.
So, once we get to that point and get that completed, and start sheathing in the walls, installing windows, installing siding, I can have a, have the whole area staged with a protected walkway.
Would you use the concrete or some kind of pump truck in the same area where the crane would be?
Absolutely.
So, is the work with respect to the construction going to be done exclusively in the South Street area that you've shown on the diagram?
So, on this diagram, you see, you know, it's, it's difficult for you to see here.
It is.
You see the six-foot tall fence that's being proposed from this Jersey barrier to this Jersey barrier? So, there's basically two spaces here and four here that were there.
So, that would be your workspace?
Sorry.
Okay. Would you be doing any work or putting any equipment on the cap?
No, absolutely not.
Would you be queuing trucks on South Street as part of your debris removal procedures?
The debris removal, so we're going to have a 30-yard container that's going to be on South Street, and then in terms of any earth removal, yeah, the trucks are going to be staged on South.
Do you coordinate with the building inspector with respect to the removal of the dumpster?
No.
You do? Okay. Is there any kind of lighting that you'd be putting in here?
Temporarily?
Yeah.
We haven't discussed temp lighting.
Hours of operation?
Seven to four. Eight to four, is there a noise ordinance that begins at?
The building inspector can certainly help you with all that, but, yeah.
We did have a conversation about whether you had requested, and the Downtown Association had actually requested or agreed-
And the police chief.
And the police chief, whether or not you would work later in the evenings and Saturdays. You said no Sundays, so.
That's right, yeah. So, basically, there's one phase where we probably could have success working after 5:00, and that's the excavation of the unsuitable materials for the foundation.
The existing foundation?
Correct. So, yeah, there's some soils in there that are not supportive of the foundation, so therefore, we have to do what's called remove and replace.
Okay.
So, it's not as though we have welders out there hanging from, you know, safety straps trying to weld something at night. We're bailing out of the hole into a truck and carrying it off, so that's fairly safe, and it stays light up till 8:30. So, I think the Downtown Association was agreeable to, if crews were, to stay till 9:00 PM.
Is the dumpster location as shown on the plan, is that for construction debris?
Yeah, that won't be there until after the foundation is in. We're going to need all the room we can to get this foundation in.
But will you be going on the cap with the truck to remove that dumpster?
No, it's this one.
This is where I'm pointing?
It's this one that we're using.
Okay, so what?
That one is, no construction vehicles would be on the cap at all.
Okay.
Paul, on that, it says possible dumpster location.
I see, okay.
And to the extent that, as you get into this, there are changes, adjustments in your schedule, what's going to be the protocol in particular for notifying the downtown merchants?
So, Mary Savage has sent out numerous emails with an email chain, and we've all been, we've had meetings, and we're all in agreement that we'll keep them updated.
And with a project like this, is it possible, or is it part of your process that, you know, let's say you start on July 5th, could you, you know, a couple weeks into it, meet with, you know, whether it's representatives from the Downtown Association, but maybe just some, you know, knowing that there's some periodic meetings scheduled so that if there are questions, concerns, there's already an opportunity to do that?
I'd be happy to, yeah.
Yeah. And I think, you know, our office would certainly want to, you know, be informed about what's going on, how it's going, any concerns.
Yeah.
That would be helpful.
Are you the contact person?
Pardon?
Are you the contact person?
Police detail? Yeah, lots of, lots of them.
Several, all over.
Lots of them. Police details? Yeah, I was concerned about the dumpster on the tunnel cap as well, so that's a possible dumpster, and what?
That will be removed from the plan. It's not a possibility.
We're not doing that, okay.
That was early on conversation before we made it clear with the embassy.
Okay. And I know you've, you know, and I appreciate it that you've coordinated this with the Downtown Association, and I think Mary's suggestion is a good one for, to establish a mechanism for some ongoing communication. But in particular, I'm interested to know if you've talked to the Square Cafe about their, you, now that we have this pedestrian walkway, I know on Mondays, I think they get their deliveries, so there's a truck usually parked there, and they take their deliveries in that back door. So, you know- Yeah, and I, I think, you know, our office would certainly want to, you know, be informed about what's going on, how it's going, any concerns.
Yeah.
That would, that'd be helpful.
Are you the contact person?
Pardon?
Are you the contact person?
Police detail? Yeah. Lots of, lots of, lots of them.
Plow.
Police details. Uh, yeah, I, I was concerned about the dumpster on the tunnel cap as well, so that's a possible dumpster and what-
That will be removed from the plan. It's, it's not-
We're not doing that. Okay.
That was early on conversation before we made it clear with the embassy.
Okay. And I know you've, you know, and I appreciate it that you've coordinated this with the Downtown Association, and I, I, I think Mary's suggestion is a good one for, to establish a mechanism for some ongoing communication. But in particular, I'm interested to know if you've talked to the Square Cafe about their, you, now that we have this pedestrian walkway, I know on Mondays, I think they get their deliveries, so there's a truck usually parked there, and they, they take their deliveries in that back door. So, you know, I'm just, I'm wondering how that, how that works.
They park where, on, on the Main Street side or the Central Street side?
The Central Street side.
Yeah, we're not going to be parking down there.
Well, no, I, I know you're not parking there, but you're sending, you're sending folks back and forth along that tunnel cap for that activity.
Oh, and you guys the pedestrians.
Right? So.
We have not, I have not spoken to them.
We have not spoken to them regarding that, but thank you for that notification.
Okay. And then just in particular, other abutters, so, you know, I'd, I'd love before we're through tonight to Nan Walsh, who's here from La Petite Maison, I'd love to hear from her if she'd like to make any comments. I think, I think most of my other questions have been, have been answered. I guess when we agree to this opening, is it, is it for the duration of the project? Like, we, we can't, we, we can't just say till, I mean, you know, November 1st or whatever? You can open it till then?
Yeah, you could.
Okay.
As a matter of fact, in the, in the proposed vote you have before you, we had not sure what close date to give the, the convey, to give the opening of the sidewalk closure.
Yeah.
We closed it on October 5th, it's a three-day win, a three-month window. So if that needs to change, then that should be altered.
Well, in some ways, it just gives us another sort of check on how things are going and, you know. Yeah. I, I would also encourage you, you know, particularly if it's, if it's the excavation where you can work later, it's also phase one. And, you know, to the extent that you can finish phase one a little, a little earlier or you stay on schedule, that bodes well for phases two and three.
Agreed.
So I would, you know, I, we appreciate that you're, you know, willing to perhaps work later, work on Saturdays. And I, I guess one other, one other entity to touch base with would be, I think, St. Paul's Church. You know, even, I'm not aware that they participate as part of the Downtown Merchant Group, but, you know, Pershing is, St. Paul's certainly use the, the parking in and around South and Main Street, and that, it just, I think, would be best to reach out to them to let them know that this is going on.
Sure.
Yeah, yeah.
You're going to be in touch with the Highway Superintendent with respect to the shade tree act?
We've had multiple meetings.
So you'll be having a hearing shortly, I take it?
Right.
Good. Very good.
I think unless Paul or Karen, if, unless you have any other comments, I, I know we have the president of the HDA here, we have a couple of the merchants. Is, is there anyone who'd, um, thank you, who'd like to ask a question or make a comment? Liz, please, if you can identify yourself.
Elizabeth Klein, 12 Peter Hobart Drive. I'm obviously also here on behalf of the Hingham Downtown Association. I've been the executive director for the past three years. As you know, it's been a difficult process with the, the loss of the building and loss of retail, loss of walk-in traffic and sales. But as you've heard tonight, members of the HDA Executive Committee and myself have met with the owner of the building as well as the builder to discuss the general plan for construction, road closures and sidewalk closures. We have agreed to have open communication. Certainly, I'll follow up to schedule some regular meetings. I think that would be a nice check-in. Obviously, they're always welcome to the HDA meetings. We meet the first Friday of every month. We've, have discussed some things like placing screens on the fencing. We'd like to have some additional signage so that people know that the, the stores are open during construction, but we're certainly hopeful and, and feel like we will have a good working relationship. We know that there will be challenges, especially during the initial phases of construction, but we're confident that these interruptions to residents and businesses will be mitigated as much as possible. Of course, we all have the, the common goal of rebuilding the beautiful and historic building in the center of the square. The additional retail and residence will also be a wonderful addition to downtown. As, as we know this process will be difficult, we do need to keep the end goal in mind, which is rebuilding the Lincoln Building as quickly and efficiently as possible, as it is literally the center of downtown. As far as timing, as you have been sensitive to the fact, we do, there is a sense of urgency for us. We want to start construction as soon as possible without any further delay. We appreciate that the owner and the builder have chosen to wait until the Fourth of July Parade and Road Race are over, as they are an integral part of, of life in Hingham. But the HDA does fully support the construction starting the next day on July 5th. As you've heard, that start date is critical because every day that passes that is delayed, it does impact the holiday shopping season. Fifty percent of the downtown sales do occur in that last quarter, as you mentioned, so in October, November and December, those, we really rely on, on that business and that revenue. So we, we appreciate the thoughtful decisions about, on this project. I know there's been lots, and lots of discussion, but on behalf of the HDA, I, I urge you to do everything in your power to support the reconstruction starting on July 5th.
Thanks so much.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
I just have one other question, if I may.
Please.
I direct this to the contractor. I, I would encourage you just to make sure that if there are any additional, you know, permits you need with respect to the street opening through the Highway Department, you inquire seasonably to get that quickly.
Nan, please.
Nanette Walsh, Ten Rice Road, also owner of La Petite Maison. Liz really said a lot about what all the merchants are feeling, but having an empty lot has been, it does, a, you know, has been a problem for downtown because it's had a devastating effect on foot traffic. I think seeing a hole in the ground and not having any screening on, on the fences, I think if they, you know, do something about that, it would help beautify. And again, with signage saying stores are open and even mentioning myself for Square Cafe, I think would be a good idea because, again, if they're closing the sidewalk, they don't even see my building. So I'm concerned about that, and it's been two years, and it's definitely had an effect on the downtown, and I felt it. So I'm, you know, just looking for any assistance that can be done to help bring the shoppers back and create an inviting, you know, experience for people to shop downtown.
Thank you very much. And we have, there's no issue with pedestrian walk, walkway on the tunnel cap? That's all, that's all good, right? We can, okay. Okay. Are we ready for a motion?
I'll entertain a motion, a move that pursuant to General Bylaw, Article 10, Section 4. The Board consent to the request of RSL Realty LLC to close the portion of the public sidewalk within the public ways of Main Street and South Street directly abutting RSL Realty's property at 5155 South Street for the period commencing 5 July 2017 through 5 October 2017, subject to the following conditions. A, fencing shall be installed in accordance with Studio Myers Architecture and Design Plan Construction Logistics Phase One, Parens LO1, and Parens dated June 16, 2017. B, the cut or removal of shade trees within the area to be closed shall be subject to a shade tree hearing in accordance with General Launch Act 87. C, police detail shall be required as determined by the Hingham Police Chief. And D, signage directing pedestrians around the closed area shall be installed and maintained in accordance with Studio Myers Architecture Plan and Design Plan Construction Logistics Phase One, Parens LO1, dated June 16, 2017.
Can I ask a question before a second? The additional conditions that we talked about, like store opening signage and, you know, regular meetings with the Downtown Association, do we need to make those part of our conditions, or are we just understanding that as part of what's been discussed tonight?
I can make that E if you'd like.
I would like that.
Okay. I have so stated through you.
Okay.
Let's make sure it's clear.
So how about, how about in D, signage directing pedestrians around the closed area shall be installed and maintained in accordance with the plan? Can we say something and?
Including signs regarding store open-
Store opening.
Store opening, okay.
Closed area. And then in E, I would say, maybe it's, is it RSL Realty LLC, since that's who we're permitting, agrees to maintain regular communication with the Board of Selectmen's Office or with the Board of Selectmen and the, the Hingham Downtown Association, whatever the, about the status of the, I forget it, just regular communication. Okay.
I'm fine with that.
And then the last question I guess I have is, you know, should we, is 10-5 the right date at this point, or?
Uh, yeah. Just going to recount it before we go in, pretty busy, that's where I'm going.
Could you come up to the microphone just so that the, the viewing audience can hear you? Thanks.
Can we extend that to November 15th?
So that's six more weeks. I think that's, I mean, that, and then you're really, you're getting into the-
Why don't you just come back?
Come back?
Well, so, I mean-
It's in all of our interest to get it done. Best interest to, you know, get it done as quickly as possible.
Understand that. I'm, I'm a little concerned that, that giving a window to November 15th will, could cause this to extend. That's, that's my concern. Because that's half of the merchant's fourth quarter. You know, October 1 to November 15th is, is, that's 25% of their sales for the year.
Understood. I, I just don't want to pour the sidewalks if there's steel being erected above it. You know, I just want to make sure that my steel guy is gone. And if, if October's two weeks of rain, I can't control that.
Sure.
This past month, we lost two days every week.
Oh, sure, no, I, you know, I, I understand that, I, um... I mean, it, it, since that, that fourth quarter is so important to the downtown merchants, let's leave it like this, and let's just have you come back. And then we'll all, we'll just have a better sense of what the timing is, and we can involve these folks in that conversation, and, you know, it's not like we're going to open up the sidewalk if it's unsafe, but, you know, right?
Exactly.
We could update the board with the meetings that we'll have with the contractors and the staff to keep, and the Downtown Association. So if we see this, you know, in, in the end of September, if we see this, you know, 10% done, we'll, we'll have to let you know. If we see 90% done, you'll have a better feeling of it, so.
Right. And we understand that there are elements here that, you know, despite everybody's best efforts, are out of our collective control. We totally get that. But I think what you're probably getting a sense of from this board is that we, we really want to push to have this done correctly, right? Because we're all going to live with it for a long time. But we also do want to be sensitive to, you know, this previous board, the town's invested a lot in the square, and we just, you know, we want to, we want to be sensitive to that as well.
Understood. Is there a way to amend your document to include the language that she, she had referenced to? That we don't want to open this up until it's safe for public safety. We don't want to open it up when it's an unsafe condition while he's moving tons of steel over it.
We'll, we'll make the assessment. I mean, we've given you the street opening, and we have very good people down here that will work with you.
Okay.
Very.
But that, that's certainly our intent, yeah.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome very much.
Okay. All right. Second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Thank you all.
Thank you so much for coming in.
Thank you very much.
Good luck on your project.
Thank you. Ted, next is the formation of a Route 3A task force.
Yes. What I failed to give you was membership in there. I, I had recommended three to you, but I failed to put in the charge. I've drafted a charge for you of the committee. You should have it in your packet. To coordinate the activities of the Route 3A Summer Street Quarter Project with town staff, represent the town with state agencies and surrounding local communities, and advise the Board of Selectmen as to appropriate designs and implementation of the project. So as you know, the project is at 25% design stage, and it'll move forward to other portions of the design stage, and, and the board has been advised on other projects about that. What we've noticed on the Route 3A Summer Street project, other than all the projects that we have, is the multitude of interested parties that are outside of our, our organization. So besides Mast Dot, we're going to have to communicate and work with Town Hall on this and openly with the Tentacle Hasset. And so we think a focused group that understands the permitting process and, and the nature of the project would be helpful. Some people I would recommend that you, you know, strongly consider, keeping liaisons with the Harbor Development Committee, that has done a lot of the work on this, but they also have a tremendous amount of work for themselves. And this is a very focused project. And generally, we've been successful on accomplishing hard projects in the town if we've just focused our talent on that. So that's what I'm recommending to you.
And we're actually appointing members tonight as well?
No, you're going to, I guess, advertise for members and then appoint them at the meeting of the 13th, I would hope. We'd like to hit this, you know, very quickly because while Mast Dot has, and you saw a copy of the letter I got today from Mast Dot.
Yep.
You know, they've indicated that this road diet and this program is critical to the implementation of the changes that they recommend at this point on the road system. This is their plan. This is what they've studied. We've invested a lot of our money on this and their expertise. Hall has some questions, and Class has some questions, and they've asked us to go through that process and address them, and we'll do that. The committee that has worked on it is, Harbor Development has helped in that regard. And so I think with that group and staff, we'll be able to see a successful road diet program in the summer of '18 and hopefully see construction in the next few years of a project over there. I, I want to bring people back to why we're doing this, because I think that's always important to understand. We deal with traffic problems throughout the town. You know that we've had many discussions about Cushing and Main, for example, and the need for lights there and other places. This has been on our radar now for, you know, our radar, for at least 10 years. The neighborhood has brought it to our attention several times. The complexity of it is the location of the water, the direct access to Hall, and the nature of working on highway projects that take quite a bit of time to get state funding and state agencies through it. But why we're pursuing it and pursuing it hard is because it has a high accident rate, not particularly higher than other areas that are of a concern, not other areas that don't have a concern, but we have hotspots in town, and this is one of them. But it's the nature of what happens when these accidents occur here. The accidents result in injury and/or death at an alarming rate compared to every other area of the intersection. So the, the other problematic area that, you know, ends up in fender benders or accidents but usually doesn't send someone to the hospital or kill them. And we've seen that here, so we, we really need to address this. And I, I think a task force would be able to harness the attention of dealing with these multiple state agencies and multiple stakeholders from other communities.
Well, and I understand the concern about the Harbor Development Committee because they have important work that is related, but that is, that is also separate. Is there anything we can do in this chart, you know, how do we make sure that a year from now, we've accomplished what we want to set out to do? And that, you know, i- in some ways, a year feels like a long time, but, you know, we, we get into budgets and we get into other things and competing demands. Is it, you know, I was just thinking, you know, could we, for example, augment the charge that's here, which I really like, with something like quarterly updates to the board? And, and again, part of what, part of what I'm sensitive to is that, is that there's a public education process that needs to go along with this. And so I'm just sort of looking for a mechanism where we know that there's going to be some conversation about this at set times, also so that if we're hitting any kind of log jams, we're not, you know, whatever they may be, we're, you know, we're- No, I, I totally agree. We're jumping on them as quickly as we can. I don't know if, if quarterly is the right amount of time, but-
Yeah, I mean, I guess the question I would have with quarterly is, I- Yeah, I mean, I guess the question I would have with quarterly is, I'd rather do it as needed because it may be more than quarterly. It may be three times in the summer and nothing in January, February, or March. Because there is a structure to highway projects. There's a process and a rhythm to them that we can't change dramatically because we're using Mast Dot and, you know, we're going through that permitting process with them. So we can't just decide on our own, you know, we're just going to veer off this way. We got to work with our consulting engineers and gain the approvals of Mast Dot ultimately to move forward on the project.
Well, but like Mary said, there's, there's the Mast Dot highway process, but there's also the, the community process, not only here, but in Hall and Cohasset, that we, you know, we would want that moving forward as well. I just, I, my view on this stuff, I think you both shared it as well, is that the charge has got to be pretty tight and pretty direct. You know, the folks need to know what they, what their, what's expected of them. We need to know what we can expect of them. And I think particularly for projects as important as this, that involve state agencies and other communities, I, I would really appreciate regular checkbacks because I want to make sure we're going, we're going at this, we're driving this project, but we're also, you know, mindful of the multiple, multiple stakeholders here, not only in Hingham, but...
I actually consider that part of the project. So we're not going to get the project done if we don't address those stakeholders and engage them in this process. The letter you got from Mast Dot today, you got late this afternoon, you might not have a chance to review it. It was clear. You know, we expect to, their, their position is that we expect to do the road diet, is a critical component of this, but we'll go forward on it when Hingham has completed discussions with Hall and Cohasset.
So, so I'll be honest with you, that was one of my big concerns. This is no date. You know, we, we could be talking about this for a long time. And so I think, so there was no date in the Mast Dot letter. It said we were going to have these conversations. That's, I was, I appreciated the fact that Mast Dot is on board for this, you know, what I think is a vital public safety issue for, you know, the, these South Shore communities, right? But I, I appreciate there is a process. I just want to make sure that we are forging ahead with it and I want the, I want...
Do quarterly updates.
Okay.
No problem.
And I guess I'd add something in there about coordinating with other relevant, you know, town committees or whatever. Because I, you know, I think we, we need, we need to make sure that, that this task force keeps, keeps those relevant bodies up to date.
And, and to me, some of that, that I think we've sort of realized in the last several weeks is that they're going to be, I think, multiple touch points. So it's going to be administration to administration, selectmen to selectmen, public safety to public safety.
Right, right, right.
I think, you know, I think all those angles have to be worked. And to me, what this task force is kind of doing is making sure all those touch points are happening.
That's a good point.
And, you know, kind of coordinating it.
And are you intending to stay involved? I know you've been involved.
That's, that's my expectation. I mean, we've met twice with the Town of Hall. We do have a pretty good sense as to some of the issues.
Okay.
You know, but, but this is the next logical step before we start getting into the weeds.
Okay.
Maybe if I can give you a little bit more about why I wanted to create it. Right now, we asked Paul Healy to go to a meeting with Hall with Deirdre Anderson, who's representing the group from the Harvard Development Committee. And we sort of just put this together ad hoc. We don't have any formal representation of who should be doing these meetings and, so I get calls from people, should I go here? Should I go here? That's not, that's not a proper way to run this project. So I just think we're trying to tie that together.
Okay.
And, you know, the one distinctive thing is, you know, Harvard Development, which I'm hoping that you would consider keeping the liaison to, to, to it that's there, I'd highly recommend that to you. You know, but Harvard Development, as you pointed out, they have a significant number of obligations they have. This is tangential, so we want to keep that close, but we don't want to burden that committee with having to interface with Hall and Cohasset and the state and us.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. So, so if we vote to form this task force consisting of three members, then we would appoint the members at one of our July meetings.
Correct.
So again, that would mean that any, anybody who is interested can contact our office.
And I know that you have your Talent Bank interviews. I don't know if you've advertised for this, but I'd ask if you could, a plug, you know, folks that have engineering and planning backgrounds would be really helpful here. So I know there's a ton of talent in the town. This would be something, quite honestly, very interesting. This is an opportunity to, to set the direction, the entrance to one quarter of the town.
Yeah.
Northeast quarter.
Yeah. And I think for me, you know, what, what I see this task force doing is kind of looking and saying, where do we want to be in June of 2017? And kind of backing up from there. And again, I understand that Mast, Mast Dot has a process and there's other timing, but I want to make sure that we are controlling and making best use of the places where we can. We want to, you know, we want to be well positioned at the right time for this to go forward.
Right.
And that's what I see this task force really working to do.
So, will you accept the motion?
Sure. Just, is there any, anybody in the audience who wishes to make a comment or... Deirdre?
Deirdre Anderson, 31 O Colony Road. I'm a member of the Harvard Development Committee and I've been working on this project with town engineer Roger Fernandez and the Harvard Development Committee since the town allocated funding in the town meeting of 2015. And I just want to offer my support for the task force and hope, just as you said, for really speedy and consistent getting to work. Because since about April 19th, in some ways, Hall has controlled the conversation. And I think we need to change that. And we also need to get answers and specifics from Mast Dot. And I think we've worked hard as a town. We've taken every step over the last five years with safety audits and community meetings and getting town support, unanimous town support with Board of Selectmen Advisory to get us the funding for work on this roadway. And I think, you know, this pilot was proposed to the town by Mast Dot. And yet, we're, they were not quick with answers when we were faced with some objections from surrounding communities, which, as you pointed out, Mary, can be addressed through public education. Two of our more outspoken critics from Hall on social media were able to read the plans that we provided on our town website and now have become defenders of the plan on very difficult Hall social media sites. So I think that is, shows that through process and education, people understand that this is a regional public safety issue. This is not a Hingham issue. And so I just, I just want to offer up our continued support. We have so much documentation and we have a communication strategy that we developed and we're ready to implement that. And I thank you for your continued support on this and I, I hope I can work with Chairman, I mean, Selectman Healy to really get some answers out of Mast Dot and work with our neighbors to understand that this, we all have a vested interest in this roadway improvement.
Thank you. This is some, this is going to be a collaborative process and it touches, it touches a lot of different, we used the word earlier tonight, it touches a lot of stakeholders. And so we want to make sure that we're working, we're working together to...
Absolutely.
...come up with the best solution, understand and work through everybody's issues and concerns. And again, I think this task force is going to, is going to help, help with all of that. So now I'll accept a motion.
I just want to, before we sign off on doing the actual motion, I would like to thank the residents and town government in Hall and Cohasset. You know, when we did meet with them, there were questions that were generated, that were respectfully broached. We'll address them definitively and substantively, hopefully to their satisfaction. Because you're right, we do want to work with our fellow communities, you know, this is just one aspect of working with Town Hall. And I think how we work with them and how we work with Cohasset is in large part going to generate the kind of positive response that we're hoping to get. I found it very respectful and I look forward to continuing the process.
Thank you. Great.
You're welcome.
I'd like to make a motion to form a Route 3A task force of three members to coordinate the activities of the Route 3A Summer Street Corridor project.
Second.
As detailed in the charge presented to us.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Thank you. Next, the Broadstone Bear Cove Alliance, discussion of proposed conveyance of land to the town and proposed amendment to the memorandum of agreement. Susan, are you?
We have real estate counsel here, Susan Murphy. She'll walk you through the amendment and answer any questions you may have. As the board knows, the ZBA filed the permit for this project with town clerk yesterday.
That occurred?
Yes.
Thank you.
And I forwarded a copy of the plan, the, the permit and the conditions to each of you.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm Susan Murphy, Town Real Estate Counsel. What I'd like to do, and I think the board members may have received copies, but there's also some pictures if you wanted to put them on your display. I don't know if you all got that one. Did you?
Better to see it like that.
I don't know.
Back of this.
There is area, and I, I believe you had some images, right? Okay, just want to make sure the board members have them as, as well. There's an area at the southerly end of the site where it abuts with, put it this way so members of the public can see it, where it abuts directly with one of the paths that goes through Bear Cove Park. So you would come in through, down Sheltree Pass and you make a right turn and there's an open area that's referred to as the meadow. And people who are familiar with Bear Cove Park, it's an area where there's some trees that are painted bright colors. That land is actually owned by Hingham Mutual, but it's not obvious, so if you're walking through the park, you might believe that it was part of the park. And then you can kind of see in some of the aerials, if you look at the aerial photos, through the tree area, there's kind of a worn path. And that's been made over decades by, we believe, employees of Hingham Mutual just enjoying the park during their workdays. And so then there's also a, a plan in your packages that shows a proposed boardwalk that would go over that area. That boardwalk would be built by Broadstone Bear Cove as part of their project as an access point for their residents to get into the park. So back decades ago, there was an intention by a prior owner to give the town of Hingham a conservation restriction over the area with the trees and the meadow. And it was shown on recorded plans, but for some reason, it fell through the cracks and the conservation restriction was never granted. It was raised as an issue both when the Board of Selectmen first negotiated the memorandum of agreement with Broadstone Bear Cove last year. And then it was also raised in the project eligibility letter that the applicant got from Mass Housing in connection with their project. That was the initial plan and that is what the current memorandum of agreement states is that the applicant would grant a conservation restriction to the town. As discussions progressed and plans were developed and Lonnie Fournier from the Conservation Department was involved, as well as Emily Wentworth from the zoning board office, other issues came to light. There is a vault, a crypt, it goes by different names. There's a small building that's believed to have been associated with the poor farm that's located in the middle of the tree area. There's concerns about potential historic sensitivities and relevance. And so the, the course of the conversations, it developed that, it was discussed and Alliance agreed that if their project goes forward, that rather than just a conservation restriction, they would be willing to deed that land in fee to the town to become part of Bear Cove Park in perpetuity. And so what you have before you today is a very brief amendment to the memorandum of agreement. All it does is delete the paragraph or substitute the paragraph that talked about granting a conservation restriction. And instead, it talks about the conveyance, the fee conveyance of this area shown on in a draft A&R plan that's been approved by the zoning board. The language that's proposed mirrors the language in the comprehensive permit issued by the zoning board, so there's no conflict between the two. And it's really just to memorialize kind of that change in, in the, a part of the mitigation that Alliance would be providing the town as part of the project.
So essentially, you are going to get a conservation restriction. That's what you agreed to originally. And now they're going to give you the land. You can't accept it yet after waiting till town meeting accepts it. So modify the agreements accordingly.
Right. And, and they're not required to convey it until they actually have a project that's being built. So it would occur prior to anyone occupying the premises, they would convey it to the town.
None.
So there's, so this is in substitution of the conservation restriction?
Right.
Okay.
As we negotiated the conservation restriction, it became obvious that it was just going to become so thorny. So the suggestion was made, you know, what are you going to do with the land? Why do you need it? They agreed to give it to us.
Okay. Any questions or comments from the audience? Would someone like to make a motion?
I move to approve and execute the certain First Amendment to memorandum of agreement with Broadstone Bear Cove Alliance LLC substituting the conveyance of an approximately 2.2 acre parcel by Alliance to the town in lieu of the grant of a conservation restriction.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Susan, just a question while you're here and it, so yesterday, the permit, the ZBA, the permit was filed. So am I correct that the town now enters into a one...
So presently, the town is in a moratorium, similar to what they were with Avalon for a one-year period.
So we have a one-year safe harbor.
Correct. Safe harbor.
So that means, and again, it's, you know, we're, we use all this vernacular, but so what that means is that from now until June 19th of 2018, any 40B development that is...
Presented to the town.
Presented to the town, we have the ability to either accept it, not accept it, or require that it conform to our zoning.
Correct.
And, and all other, all other local regulations.
And should, and should Alliance not pull a building permit on this project within that one-year period of time, the moratorium expires.
Right. And do we, based on the hearing, and, and I know you were involved in that, but is it, it's, it's my sense that it's realistic that Broadstone Bear Cove would pull a building permit within the next year, similar to what Avalon did?
The only thing that would stop them essentially would be an appeal of the permit.
Yep. And who can file an appeal of the permit?
Counsel probably better to answer that than me.
Abutters or any persons who believe they are aggrieved by the issuance of the permit can appeal to the Superior Court.
And, and Susan, what is the appeal window for appealing this permit to the, is there a window?
Yeah, it's about 20 days.
Okay.
About three, in the next three weeks or so.
Okay. And just again, a reminder for, I believe I remember this, but just confirm that if, when a building permit is pulled on this project and these 220 units are applied to our subsidized housing inventory, our projections are that Hingham will have met its 40B requirement through 2030.
Well, the uncontested, the uncontested number would be approximately 11.65%.
Yep. Which would again mean that, that during that time, any additional affordable housing projects that come before the town, we would have the ability to enforce all of our local zoning with respect to setbacks, density.
We would not be forced to accept the project.
Right. And that authority lies in the zoning board of appeals. So basically, the zoning board of appeals would file a letter, like they've done in every other project, saying the town has this protection, has met its statutory requirements. In this case, if we're at an uncontested number, the HCD would agree with us. And at that point, the zoning board could approve the project, approve it with conditions, or they could deny it outright and the, and the developer would have no appeal rights.
Which is, I mean, and Karen, you weren't, you weren't on the board, but I remember you wrote a commentary, I think, for, for Paul and I, the reasons that we supported the development agreements with Avalon and Broadstone Bear Cove were that if both projects came to fruition...
agreements with Avalon and Broadstone Bear Cove were that if both projects came to fruition, the town would have reached an uncontested 10%, which again, doesn't mean we necessarily stop moving ahead on affordable housing, but we can do it on our terms and within our zoning that, that, you know, members of this town have created.
And I'd just like to note, and Emily Wentworth could probably give you more of that data, but I think it's worth noting that the number of multifamily housings that were, that, housing units that have been created by permit in the town of Hingham in the last 12 months, it probably unrivaled by other, any other town in Massachusetts. Not necessarily comparing to cities, which have much harder, larger scale, but it's really, Hingham's contribution to multifamily housing and affordable housing is probably not been met, in this 12-month period, has probably not been matched by any other town. And I think it shows the commitment that the town, and I'm just going back to my, my planning days, it's just.
Ted, just a procedure question, and I know we have folks waiting for the goals and objectives discussion, but I also know that counsel is on the clock here.
So I would just ask-
Are there a couple of votes that you'd like us to take before we?
In case you have any questions, I mean, you know, if you don't have any questions, counsel's fine, but just in case you have any questions, it might be worthwhile taking up those conservation restrictions while she's still here.
Could you perhaps just give us the 30 seconds on the conservation restrictions?
Sure. All these properties have been purchased with CPC funds. CPC funds require a conservation restriction to be placed on the property. And Susan has taken us through that process with each of the properties that we have here in question.
Any questions from my colleagues on this? This has been something that I know we've, we've talked about needing to work on and appreciate.
So-
Susan and Lonnie's help in making these things happen. I know there was a backlog.
Yep, and so Conservation Commission is in support of these. These are going to be managed by the Hingham Land Conservation Trust.
This is the first third. There's, there's a total of 12.
Okay.
And this is the first third.
Okay.
I'd just like to comment briefly.
Please.
I'd like to thank counsel for the hard work that you've done on these, this Avalon Alliance project. I know how difficult the 40B process is, and this has been particularly challenging. The ZBA and Emily Wentworth, I think the town's lucky to have such good people working on these kind of issues. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay.
All good.
I'll accept a motion.
I move that pursuant to Article 23, two little eyes of the 203, 2003 town meeting, Article 27 of the 2013 Hingham Town Meeting in Mass General Law 40, Section 8C, the board approved and grant by, by the Conservation Commission of a conservation restriction to the Hingham Land Conservation Trust over the land located at 0R Pleasant Street, shown as Lot 79 on Assessor's Map 91.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Move that pursuant to Articles 11, Subparagraph 5 and 27 of the 2013 Hingham Annual Town Meeting in Mass General Law Chapter 40, Section 8C, the board approved the grant by the Conservation Commission of a conservation restriction, the Hingham Land Conservation Trust over the land located at 0 Rockland Street, shown as Lot 65 along Assessor Map 42.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Move that pursuant to Article 26, Sub 11 of the 2014 Hingham Annual Town Meeting, General Law Chapter 40, Section 8C, the board approved the grant by the Conservation Commission of a conservation restriction to the Hingham Land Conservation Trust over the land located at 0 off Main Street, shown as Lot 49 on Assessor Map 167.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I move that pursuant to Article 32 of the 2016 Hingham Annual Town Meeting in Mass General Law Chapter 40, Section 8C, the board approved the grant by the Conservation Commission of a conservation restriction to the Hingham Land Conservation Trust over the land located South Pleasant Street and Main Street, shown as Assessor's Map 137, Lots 1, 18, 21B, and a portion of 23 in Assessor's Maps 147, Lot 6.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Is there anything else, Ted, that while Susan is here?
Yep, we're, we have a vote for you to approve a lease that we've negotiated with Richard Orr pursuant to an RFP process for the former Tree and Park Building known as Eight Short Street. If you have any questions of counsel, who assisted with us on this? We, we did increase the rent accordingly through the lease negotiations to begin compensating for the money we spent to replace the septic system. Not during the life of the three-year lease, that would be inappropriate because the asset has a 30-year life, so what we've, we add to it.
So this is, this is a three-year lease, it defines the types of activities that can and cannot go on-
Correct.
-within that building. It speaks to parking, the town retaining access to the building. I think there were some other headlines as far as a couple-year extension notice, a deposit. Could you also maybe just quickly speak to the improvement of the windows, because that was a CPC project that town meeting approved?
So, that project didn't happen during the last lease, and we've added it here into this lease going forward. They're going to continue to do that work relative to the windows. There were some other terms, and I don't have them off the top of my head regarding work that we asked him to do.
There's, so the lease is substantially the same as the lease he previously had. The rent has been renegotiated. The numbers, if someone looks at the numbers side by side, they'll look like they're lower. However, before the tax payments were rolled into the rent, and now they're separated out, so, but it does come out to cover the town the same way it did in the past or a little higher. He also indicated a wish to level off the cement floor of the building, paint it, and also replace some cabinets that need replacement and painting. So the lease provides for permission for him to do that work as well. But otherwise, the lease is pretty much the same as the lease he was operating under during his previous lease term.
Questions from my colleagues?
Nope.
Just glad to see the Tree and Park line being-
And Mr. Orr is comfortable with all of the terms?
My understanding is he's signed the lease, correct?
He has not, he's, he's out of town today. I expected him to be in, but he was out of town.
All right.
He'll be in on Friday.
Great. Someone like to make a motion?
Move pursuant to the request for proposals issued by the board on January 18th, 2017, award to Richard Orr, DBA, J.F. Orr &amp; Sons. The board approve and execute a lease with Richard Orr, DBA, J.F. Orr &amp; Sons at the buildings of Eight Short Street, commonly known as Tree and Park Barn.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Yes, and Mayor, if you don't mind, I'll just, I have some things I can't leave until you sign, so I'm just going to stay and listen as an in-
You all have to sign these documents tonight.
Yeah, so I'll stay, just stay as an interested resident and off the clock-
No problem.
And wait, and get your signatures at the end.
No problem.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ted, the next, the next thing is the goal and agendas. I am, I am mindful of two things. I'm mindful that there are several people who have been here in the room waiting for about two hours for this agenda item. I'm also mindful that it's 20 minutes past 10, and many of us have work and family responsibilities. So I guess what I'm asking you, you know, we had intended to do a little bit of a presentation of goals, we're not going to vote anything tonight, because as we've done in the last two years, we've sort of presented, but given an opportunity for input. How would you like to do this? I, I want to make sure that people who have come to, to listen or to perhaps speak on this have an opportunity.
What I would suggest is a quick overview and take it up at your next agenda item again, because it's, like you said, it's 10:30 at night, you're setting your goals for the next year. If you're prepared to do it, then we'll keep going, but generally, you know-
Yep, but I would, I also do, I, I do want to make sure that we allow time for people who want to be heard on this to, to be heard.
I guess, does it make sense to just move to 2018, or do you think there's discussion that from 2017, just trying to move it along?
Well, I kind of would like to tell you where you've been, so you know where you're going, but we can jump to that. Whatever the board's pleasure.
Ted, why don't you just hit the headlines of fiscal year 17?
Okay. We're not putting anything up, right? Okay, so I'll just run through some accomplishments in 17. And we put them in our, a little bit of our priority for what we did, but town migration and new healthcare system, a monumental task of moving 1,300 people to a new healthcare program. It was truly an amazing accomplishment for the town clerk. Negotiation of two affordable housing projects that you folks worked on here last year, another amazing accomplishment. You heard from, from town council, real estate council, that there isn't a town in the Commonwealth that achieved anywhere near what you did last year on that. Successful negotiating, negotiation of the HMC lease for 30 years on Barnes Wharf. Successful completion of the South Hingham Study Group Plan, which is right about done. Almost. Purchase of learner property. Passage of the Town Administrator Special Act, thank you. Implemented cooperative programs between Recreation Country Club Schools to assess and maintain over 50 acres of athletic fields. We've accelerated your road building schedule dramatically. We joined the Governor's Community Compact Initiative, we applied for and received over 1.2 million in federal state grants. We completed a $105.4 million budget for fiscal 18, negotiated three union contracts, coordinated and held a successful 37-article annual town meeting, interviewed approximately 50 volunteers for boards and committees, and renewed the lease for the Tree and Park Barn. I'm sure there's a couple other things we left off, we tried to highlight the bigger ones, so.
We settled the leasing issue in Bear Cove Park.
Go with Foss, don't forget Foss. Don't forget, yeah, we, we recognize Stephen Foss, too, yeah. So, next, I'll take you through several slides that speak to goals and objectives for 18. Again, these are our suggestions to you, we need you obviously to give us your feedback, comments, and decide what you want to do. So fiscal initiatives, assess five-year financial outlook. Most of these initiatives we do always, and we probably always will continue to do these. We have a five-year forecast, and that begins our five-year financial outlook, so we can make decisions now and understand the implication for the, for the future. Why do we do five? Well, because as you know, the first year out is pretty good, second year, and third year starts to get a little less. By the time you get the five years out on a five-year plan, you're a little sketchy as to how that's going to come into reality. It's less predictive at the outer edges. That's why we don't go into the 10 or 15 or 20 years, because it doesn't really give us good feedback. Capacity for operating budget increases is what we're going to be looking at, ability to finance large capital projects, as you know, we have quite a few. Monitoring financial metrics, fund balance, debt, capital, quarterly department budget reviews, these are all part of the things that we do on a routine basis, whether they're your goals or not. You know, we have quarterly budget meetings and we do those things. Managing debt and long-term liabilities, besides a financial advisor that constantly monitors our debt for refunding opportunities versus where the market is, you know, we manage that through the processes that you've seen through advisory, selectmen, and your budget process. Promote long-term economic development and mitigate the residential tax burden. So this is something you're going to see pop up in other areas. You know, we need to start addressing South Hingham, and we need to start addressing the sewer issue in South Hingham, because you will not be able to activate any tax revenues from that area without that. Identify and pursue opportunities to assist the needs in our community. So, you know, we've always focused on tax relief and ways we can assist in any manner we can, and we'll continue to look at that. With respect to the assets, maximizing asset utilization and ensure facilities are suitable. We have the process of implementing the harbor warrant articles that were approved by town meeting. In addition, we need to assess and prioritize town facility needs, harbor, library, town hall, fire, school. Some of the committees here have money that, and processes that they need to move forward with. Obviously, you're familiar with the Fire Station Building Committee, the town hall got some funding committee, they're going to move forward, school, of course, is moving forward with their projects. We'll need to develop options to meet these needs and financing costs and understanding how we would pay for the things that come forward through those processes. Also, we'd like to advance any opportunities on town-owned land, you know, whether they're, whatever type of activities that you guys are interested in looking for, we keep track of what we have for town-owned land. In terms of delivery of services and efficiently and effectively, we will continue to pursue state and federal funding opportunities wherever we are, wherever we can. Identify and assess operational cost savings and opportunities, we continue to do this through our quarterly budget meetings, through our department head meetings, through citizens who come in and tell us, you know, you could do this, and we listen. And sometimes their, their suggestions are very helpful. Explore affordable housing opportunities. I know that we've permitted, you know, two major developments, but remember the Affordable Housing Trust came to you and said, you know, we still need family housing, not apartment housing, but family housing. And so they're going to look at, you know, ways to do that. We'd like to suggest that you would assist them in that. And, you know, overall, to assess community needs and formation of task forces where appropriate, because we've used those in the past at targeted projects, like you just did for the Route 3A Summer Street Corridor, as opposed to standing committees like the Conservation Commission that are going to have that responsibility year in and year out. Stewardship. Promote the general welfare and stewardship of the town. We're going to try to assess the traffic and parking in Hingham Square. Clearly, one of the most significant barriers to Hingham, downtown Hingham, you know, maintaining its success is parking. We've heard this all. We know that, you know, people go downtown and they don't see a parking spot, they leave, and they go to another place to shop. And so we need to figure out, you know, parking garage, increased parking, those type of things. I know that Mary Savage Dunham, our community planning director, has begun to look at opportunities at the Station Street Parking Lot, and I know that we have some opportunities maybe behind the Lincoln Building, Lincoln, I'm sorry, the, the Hingham Institute for Savings. So those are things that we got to look at. Promoting environmental sustainability, aquifer and water supply, energy and recycling. I know that we've talked about sewer, and we've talked about sewer in South Hingham. You know, one of the reasons we looked at sewer in South Hingham was from the Conservation Commission. Several years ago, the Conservation Commission under former agent Cliff Prentice developed a program where they clearly identified our aquifer and how we were depleting it, and the need to figure out a way to replenish it. And it starts in South Hingham and it moves north through the community. It's hard for people, I think, in New England sometimes to think about lack of water, but I, trust me when I say to you, the rest of the country doesn't share our abundance of water. I know that where my family's from, they spend $200 a month for water, and they don't water their lawn. So there's parts of this country that water is a significant issue. We've been told by DEP that they will not issue any more wells, well permits to the town of Hingham. That means we're going to have to fix the pipes, control the water loss, and address replenishing our aquifer, not for expansion, but for survival in the future, so. We would like to leverage the website and social media for more communications. Again, you know, these are areas where we have a lot of expertise and opportunities, but, you know, we need to continue to focus on that. We, we, we have a social media coordinator, but, you know, I think we'd like to figure out ways to increase that as that's becoming more dominant in our, in our field. We just heard it essentially from the Cable Advisory Committee in a way, HCAM. You know, they're no longer broadcasting on TV, they're broadcasting on the internet, on our database. And so we want to figure out how we can, you know, join with that. I mentioned earlier, explore sewer solutions for South Hingham. I mean, you have three major properties down in South Hingham that are all interested in sewer, the industrial park, the Bristol Brothers' property, the Derby Street Shops. You know, right now, all that, that water is being managed through septic systems or package plants, and very little economic development will occur down there until you address these issues. So I know we've talked over the years about tax relief and things like that. Cost of government is exceeding 2.5%, and it's likely to. And we come up with revenue in other areas, but growth of our tax base is really the only way to achieve true tax relief. You need to partner with other entities to create more sharing of the cost of government, and that's what expansion through growth is. And so I think that's the last area that you really have. You did the shipyard, you know, that, that was a 10-year project that you did, you know, prior to 2000 and through that period, and we've seen the Derby Street Shops renovated. You have the 300 acres where the Bristol property is being developed, but, you know, that, the land is there in that area, that's the focus of what you're going to have. You don't have a lot in the other areas of the community, so, and that area is bound by infrastructure, primarily sewer. Conduct ethics and conflict of interest and open meeting law training for all employees and volunteers. I am happy to say that we have started the scheduling- I am happy to say that we have started the scheduling of this event, and we are planning to have one large event as opposed to two separate ones in September. We're going to have a little bit of a different ethics presentation. It will also include David Giannotti and the State Ethics Commission. We're going to bring in some other folks to talk about ethics and how we work through our ethical dilemmas. And we plan that for a two-hour session. We're hoping to use Sanborn Auditorium. If we schedule it, we're trying to schedule it for the Tuesday that you're not meeting in September. So we got it. We're trying to wait for your schedule. We kind of have an idea roughly yet, but we haven't figured it out completely. And we want to do it that night, because we can get all the town employees to be here that work till seven anyway, and we're going to ask you folks to give us a concerted effort to get all the town volunteers there. We have not had good turnout, and the State Ethics Commission has pointed out to us that, you know, they want us to have better turnout if they're going to make that effort to come down, so we would like to do that. Additional goals. We would like to continue, recommend to you to continue the Aquarian litigation, given that you filed the briefs and you're waiting for the information, you're waiting for the presentation in front of the appeals court. I think that would be straightforward. We would ask you, and tonight you have a vote for that, to include the rate case in the litigation, as we would like to become intervening status on the rate case that they have. As you know, they're asking for a fourteen percent increase in water rates. Work with advisory committee to consider long-term project impacts on the fiscal position. So these are the big group of capital projects that are moving through our pipeline, and we need to start thinking about how, structure a method to pay for them, which I believe we can. Continue planning for a central parking garage. You can see the overlaps. This is the downtown parking garage that was mentioned earlier. Design and obtain cost estimates for the North Fire Station. You know, this project is continuing to move forward. We need to work with the school department to figure out what we're going to replace in that area, but that's a high-priority project. And I think that's, and we will be negotiating three more labor contracts this year with three unions. And then we need to discuss how Hingham wants to engage appropriately in the Weymouth Compressor Discussion. It's a significantly large issue. A lot of people in the community are very concerned about it. Each of you have spoken to me about your concerns about it, and we're going to have to figure out our piece and where we fit in, given that, you know, the facility is in Weymouth. But, you know, you've seen Quincy's, you might have seen Quincy's participation in it, and so we've got to figure out at what level we want to participate and how. And so that's an issue I'm putting forth for you. And that's a very rough and quick recap of your goals, last year and this year. Sorry to be so quick.
Karen or Paul, any questions or comments?
I'm going to absorb it and perhaps ELQ it at another date.
Okay.
It's late.
Yeah, I agree. I need some time to think about it, and yeah.
So one of the things we thought about is to, you know, give you a chance to look at it, react to it, things that are missing, things that maybe you don't want to put on here. And I might also just ask that we all give some thought, you know, I think what would be helpful for Ted and Tom is for us to convey to them and to each other sort of, you know, some of our priorities. I think, you know, if we try to do all these things, we could push ahead a little bit on all of them, but what we might want to do is to push ahead a little bit more on some than others. So we will, you know, let's make sure that we schedule this for our next meeting, and I think in the last two years, we've also put this document up on the website, so I think that that's a good practice.
We'll ask for public comments. There'll be a place for people to comment. We'll get the comments, just like we did with the.
I think that would.
The lease laws.
That would be great. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to make a comment or ask a question? Michelle?
Good evening. My name is Michelle Abretton. I am Imam of Three Little Rugrats. I live at Eight Volunteer Road. Thank you very much for your time tonight. I'll be brief. I understand the timing. We would like to bring to the selectmen's attention of the proposed compressor station. Happy to hear that it's in the 2018 conversation. We can't wait to 2018. It's time is of the essence. We're grateful for.
Twenty eighteen is now, just to let you know. Starts July one.
Okay.
Just to let you know.
Can you tell, rookie?
Not six months out.
Okay. So we would like to make sure that is, we're grateful for the resolution that was created in April, but we need to keep the momentum going. You've got a lot of calls. There's many people in the room tonight that are very passionate and very involved, very proud members of this community. We chose this town for a reason. We want to protect it at all costs. It's a very serious situation. For a while, we were feeling potentially that there was not enough attention being given, but I think that that is slowly changing through the work that we've done, and we just would like to put it on your radar. And one thing I do want to say is, I was joking at the break in between, said, maybe we'd be so lucky to get the same attention and detail and research that the Bearcove Leash Law has received. I hope that we can get the same attention, but it sounds that we're headed in that direction. Our requests for you, which I'm going to punt to my friend, is to file for intervenor status, and that's where we need your help. And maybe Elizabeth, do you want to come up and talk to that?
Sure.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. And just before this, I just want to let Karen and Paul know, because I've met with the Hingham residents against the compressor station group, and these are also the women who organized the forum that was held last week, the twelfth, two weeks ago, here in Hingham. And I just want to, you know, publicly say thank you for your efforts on that. And I had asked our town administrator to look into what intervenor status means from a legal perspective. As I think you can probably tell through, you know, sitting through this meeting this evening, we had some time-sensitive things, so that is something that we're going to be looking into following this meeting to just, you know, get a sense from council about what that means, what that looks like. The town administrator's also committed that he's going to be reaching out to some of the administration in Weymouth, as well as to our state legislators to just, you know, as we're all trying to, you know, figure out how we best engage on this. So we have some work that we have to do over the next couple of weeks, but that's going to be what's going on. Please come up to the mic.
Hi, Elizabeth Mold, Seventy Winter Street, Hingham. I don't really have a lot to add, other than, you know, inaction will make the decision for us. And I think, I've spoken to Mary, I just emailed the selectmen a courtesy copy of the Ten Citizens Group Brief that a group of nineteen Hingham citizens just filed in their individual capacities, which state statute permits us to do. Our primary concern was, in the air permitting proceedings, if we don't intervene before that final permit issues, we will be unable to appeal any kind of air permitting decision that comes out of DEP. And air seems to be the part that is going to possibly affect Hingham the most. I mean, the ship has sailed on the other permits, so time is really of the essence. If Hingham wishes to intervene in its town capacity, as Weymouth has done, and then its council people have also filed a Ten Citizens suit in addition to the town filing to intervene.
And the town of Quincy, just so my colleagues know, in early June, so a couple of weeks ago, Quincy passed a resolution related to air quality monitoring. It was similar to, in two thousand sixteen, they passed a resolution that was opposing the Chapter ninety-one license. So Quincy has filed a resolution, if you will.
Correct. And the administrative law judge in charge of flatlands and waterways has, I think there's a scheduling conference this July, and I believe those two permits are scheduled for hearing this coming December. That she has not talked about, or he, I don't know, has not talked about the air permit yet. So that final permit has not yet issued, but there's nothing holding the air permit up, as far as I can see.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Jim?
Jim Watson, Two Ninety One Rockland Street. Just a quick comment on the discussion of about an hour ago, about forty B, because in all the years, we've had that law, and to my memory, almost no project in Hingham has been appealed. They've been negotiated, they've been resolved. Paul would remember, wasn't the Mcfield project in nineteen eighty the last one that was appealed? And the HAC has supported the town.
There's been a couple that have been appealed.
That's the only one I remember.
Well, I have a vivid memory of one of them, but I'm reluctant to get into that discussion publicly right now. It's late.
But for the most part, the town has done well negotiating with developers and getting things resolved, and we haven't had to appeal them. So that we talk about the five, half a percent or the ten percent in the safe harbors, we've done well without that quote protection. That's all. And I didn't realize there are other ones, Paul.
I can think of two right off the top of my head.
Thank you.
I remember my feels, because I was working on something related, and I didn't know the others.
I bet.
So one of the other things that we'll make sure of, Ted and Tom, is that any of the documents that we've, that we'll be getting, we'll make sure we forward those to both of you as well, so that that can, you know, help out. I think we have some kind of questions about process procedure, kind of how to intervene, how to best, you know, put things forward, and so if.
As you know, we've been putting forth a little bit of energy and effort towards the Bearcove Park issue.
Absolutely.
I think we've kind of achieved a certain milestone tonight with that, and I'll allocate resources now to start looking at, not that we're not looking at anything else, but, I mean, I think you guys particularly know what the last three or four days have been like.
No, absolutely. And it's, oh, I think.
Can I just request a citizens advisory group be formed? Is that the forum tonight, to request that formally or informally, or any way that we can get it?
Yeah. And what would you see, just kind of briefly, but what would you see that group doing? What would their role be?
Assessing the true impact that the proposed project would bear on Hingham in terms of air quality, in terms of potential real estate value decline, I mean, basically everything, any way that it would impact Hingham. Be able to do some of the legwork for you. I mean, a lot of it's already been done by our group.
Mm-hmm. Okay. So I think.
I'm going to give you a range of options on the entire process. I'm probably going to have to reach out to some of the folks in this group.
Yeah, perhaps. It's not necessary to be formal.
No, and if you could.
But I want to give you a range of options. I know you guys have all asked me about intervenor status. I would love to give it to you right now, but I need to sit with council and have a logical conversation, understand the cost implications, and understand, so you have all the answers when you're ready to go.
Right.
And you can be as successful as possible.
I also think it's important, you know, you made a good suggestion to me the other day, which is kind of, you know, reaching out to the other communities as well, because I think, you know, this is clearly a sort of a South Shore issue, so how do we best coordinate and be helpful and supportive to one another?
And perhaps that's the method. I can't tell you right now. I want to get my arm around the whole issue for you and try to give you as much input as I can, and we'll start working on that.
And if that can be one of the, one of the options that's under consideration, I think that would, that would be great.
I'll give you two days to recover from the Bearcove project.
Two whole days? That's a day more than I thought I had, so I'm good. I would just ask you one thing to consider when you think about your goals and objectives, and that is the concept of bandwidth.
Yes.
And the ability to keep a little up, because we're running, you know, well over a hundred million dollar organization here. Things happen during the year that you haven't even thought of yet. It's just the way an organization works of this structure, and we have to have a little flexibility in our ability to deal with it, or, you know, our products aren't going to be as good.
Well, you know, the forty Bs are a perfect example of that last year, and quite frankly, the Bearcove Park, that, you know, I think those were, those were things that we never contemplated when we were sitting here a year ago. And they are probably three things that took up, took up the majority of staff time. I'm also conscious, as I said, of, you know, I would rather make some, a lot of headway on a couple of things than sort of push everything along a little bit. So speaking of pushing things along, we have, we have a couple of.
You have a few more votes left today.
We do have a few more votes, and.
And they're important votes, so.
We have under appointments.
I'll move to appoint the following individuals to the position of Assistant Harbor Master for the upcoming year. Patrick Johnson, Robert Sullivan, Philip Hall, Kevin Nguyen, Matthew Chakalas.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Move to appoint the following four detectives as agents to the Board of Selectmen to enforce the laws of the Liquor Control Act and the Alcoholic Beverages Control Commission, regulations for all licensed liquor establishments in the town of Hingham, for a term ending April thirtieth, two thousand and eighteen. Detective Sergeant Ryan O'Shea, Detective Daniel Leary, Detective John Markwart, and Detective Phil Tracy.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Move to appoint Bill Fortune, Mara Richards, Jeff Lally to the Fourth of July Parade Committee.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Sally, could you make a note that Jim Murphy, the head of the Fourth of July Parade Committee, was interested in getting the contact information for any appointments we make to the committee? Wants to bring him in right away.
That's good.
Okay.
We need to back up and get a hearing officer vote.
Yep, so.
It's going to be on the third page right now, right on the learner.
Yep, so now we're on the third page. I'll accept a motion to designate the town administrator as the hearing officer for police matters.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I'll accept a motion to sign the engagement letter with Bogle, DeSantis, and Coughlin, PC, effective July first, two thousand and seventeen.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Did you, did you do the Tree and Park Barn earlier?
Yes, we did.
I know you talked about it, but I didn't ever hear the words.
Ted, could you just speak to, the next vote is the rate case.
Sure. This is requesting you to intervene, or that earlier, on the Aquarian Water Company's of Massachusetts rate increase, rate case, DPU seventeen ninety. So as I've said earlier, they've requested a fourteen percent rate increase. They're a private company, they don't go to town meeting, they don't go through our budget process, they go to the Department of Public Utilities, they make their case in front of the Department of Public Utilities, we make our case, and that's what the rate becomes. So we want to make sure that there's certain things in there that, you know, they've said in the past they weren't going to include, legal fees, other things like that. We usually engage in a, we will engage a consultant that we've used in the past, David Russell. We'll work with the Town Hall and the Town of Cohasset jointly. We usually, they usually file intervenor status, too, and we all work the case together.
And I think what we found in the past is that when Hingham has intervened, which means that we actually challenged the rate case.
Exactly.
And we enter, we enter into a legal process, that the costs that we've borne in the past, which is approximately fifty to sixty thousand dollars per rate case, typically what we find is that the rate granted by the DPU, that it sort of pays for itself.
Well, far exceeds the legal costs that we involve in, not necessarily to our organization, of course, we don't get the benefit of that, but the residents do get lower water rates.
I'll accept a motion to intervene in the Aquarian Water Company of Massachusetts, Inc. rate case, DPU seventeen dash ninety.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
The fire department's requested to open up the Emergency Operations Center during the fireworks celebration. They don't expect anything, they're doing this as a little bit of a training exercise, so they want to make sure they're prepared in the case of an issue.
Someone like to make a motion?
I move to open the Emergency Operations Center during both the fireworks celebration on July one, two thousand and seventeen, and Road Race and Parade on July four, two thousand and seventeen.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we've got a couple entertainment licenses.
So the chief is in support in the materials that we have received, and therefore I move to amend the entertainment license at Weber Development LLC DBA Scarlet Oak Tavern to include live music on its outside patio during Sunday brunch from eleven thirty a.m. to three thirty p.m.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Move to approve the issuance of a special one-day wine and malt beverages license to Alexander Rollins on behalf of the Hingham Historical Society for the Vintage Baseball Game to be held at Derby Academy Talbot Field on Saturday, July second, two thousand and seventeen, from three p.m. to the end of the game, although next year I'd like to see the time defined.
Time, yeah. I agree with them. But nonetheless, I will second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Move to approve the issuance of a special one-day wine and malt beverages license to Move to approve the issuance of a special one-day wine and malt beverages license to Paul Wahlberg on behalf of Almanove for a catered event to be held at the Hingham Shipyard Amphitheater on Friday, June 23, 2017, from 4:00 to 10:00 p.m. This approval is contingent upon a police detail.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Move to waive the permit fees associated with the high school roof project.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Move to waive the electrical permit fees associated with the inspection of wiring and electrical boxes at Lincoln School Apartments.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Just for the benefit of the public, we waive the permit fees associated with any permitting required for any town-owned buildings.
And for the benefit of the public, even though we blew through these votes, each one of us has already spent time talking with either Ted or Tom about every single one of these votes. So even though it looks like we're just going through the motions, we have done the diligence behind casting the vote tonight.
Ethics disclosure?
That's me. Okay, because of my employment relationship with Ropes and Gray, I'd like to read into the record my ethics disclosure. Section 23 of the Massachusetts Conflict of Interest statute requires me to disclose in a manner that is public in nature any facts that would lead a reasonable person to conclude that any person can improperly influence or unduly enjoy my favor in the performance of my official duties, or that I'm likely to act or fail to act as a result of kinship, rank, position, or undue influence of any party or person. In consideration of this and other sections of the Massachusetts Conflict of Interest statute, I want to disclose the following. In my professional life, I am an attorney at the Boston-based law firm of Ropes and Gray. Ropes and Gray currently represents the School Committee of the Town of Hingham in Labor and Employment Matters. I do not participate in the firm's representation of the school committee, and in my capacity as selectman, neither I nor Ropes and Gray will be rendering legal advice to the board or to the town. I am not a partner of Ropes and Gray, and as such, I do not receive or request compensation from the firm in connection with the Labor and Employment Matters in which the firm represents the school committee. The Labor and Employment Matters in which Ropes and Gray represents the school committee are not currently the subject of my responsibility as selectman. I anticipate that as selectman, I will be asked to participate in the board's recommendation of an overall budget for the school department, and I would participate in that recommendation only after consulting with Ropes and Gray, inconsistent with the requirements of Section 19V of the Massachusetts Conflict of Interest statute, making this public disclosure, and then obtaining a written determination from the clerk of the town. Similarly, if any future matters in which Ropes and Gray represents the school committee become the subject of my responsibility as selectman, I would be unable to participate as selectman in those matters without first consulting with Ropes and Gray, making a public disclosure like this one, and obtaining a written determination from the clerk of the town. Ropes and Gray's policies require me to obtain the permission of my firm prior to serving in outside positions such as my selectman position. I have obtained that permission, and although I have no reason to believe the firm would revoke the permission, it is granted to me. If the firm changes its view on this issue in the future, it would be possible that I would have to resign as selectman.
Okay. Thank you.
Let's hope that doesn't happen.
Selectman and town administrator reports.
So it's really late. You have my report in the package. I've talked to all of you. I would just point out the last item, Powers Field. We are working diligently with the recreation department and the gracious neighbors of the field. They've already raised within about a two-week period $11,000 towards the cost of this, and we're trying to fine-tune the design. We think we can accomplish the goals that everybody wants, which is the three pieces replaced, no impact to the athletic field, and yet a safe surface that's permissible for those, for that area. We hope to bring you back a plan and design at your next meeting.
And thank you to Mark Cullings for agreeing to spearhead that effort. Anything else from Ted or Tom?
I also had the Parac audit report of your retirement system. I wanted you to see it. We do an annual audit, so, you know, we kind of catch these things a little before them. But it's a state agency, and they did it. It's a three-year report, and, you know, it shows no findings whatsoever.
That's awesome. Great, that's great. Paul, anything?
Nice job on the roads to the highway department. I've been watching their work, and it's really, it's coming out well. There was a fire at Sherwin-Williams yesterday. There's some very good employees who might be without work temporarily, so if anybody's looking, there's some good people down there. So hopefully they get back in business soon.
Karen?
I've just been working away for the most part, although I did play in the SNAP golf tournament yesterday, and just a great cause, and really always a nice opportunity to be out at the South Shore Country Club. They do a fantastic job.
And just to let you know that I did attend the Plymouth County Advisory Board meeting last Thursday, the nearly four-hour meeting. And the outcome of the commissioner's salary was that the proposed recommendation of increasing it from $15,000 to $28,000 did not pass. There was a, there was an amended motion to keep the salaries flat at $15,000. I supported that along with several others. It lost by about half a percent because votes are weighted based on, based on each community's contribution to Plymouth County. But there was, and to me, it was a better place to go, was that a $5,000, an increase to $20,000. So basically, the idea would be that instead of a $15,000 or a $13,000 increase in one year, it's, it would, the trajectory is to do it over three years. And then there was discussion about where that, the $2,400 that was originally budgeted for salaries would go. I was disappointed it didn't go to OPEB, but it did go into a stabilization fund, which requires a two-thirds vote to pull it out. So I appreciated both of your thoughts, and I would say that the conversation with selectmen representing all of the communities within Plymouth County, I was just really proud to participate in that discussion. I thought that a lot of really good points were made in a lot of different ways, and what was particularly impressive to me is that there were selectmen who had been there, who have been serving as selectmen for upwards of 15 years. And I just, there was, there was a, there was a whole lot of public service in that room, and it was, it was really very impressive. So with that, our next meeting is July 13.
Correct. It's a Thursday meeting.
We typically are going to be on a Tuesday, but in the summer with schedules and things, we've got to do that. And I would, since we will not be here before the Fourth of July, so many great celebrations in Hingham, fireworks on July 1, the road race the morning of the Fourth, obviously the parade. Our thanks to all of the different volunteers and town staff who make all those, all those events work really hard. And just in closing, I want to salute my colleague to the right. I, I think, I hope what people saw tonight is that we all gave a lot of thought to this leashing issue, and I'm really proud of how we came together to agree on something. You know, it was not, not pretty always at times, but I really respect and value everybody's opinions, and Paul in particular, I know, because in, you know, in your capacity and some of the work that you do, this feels a whole lot more personal to you, and because you've seen a lot of it firsthand. And I think it was a, it was a little higher mountain for you to get there, and I really appreciate that you were open-minded and working hard to get there. And I know it's not easy, and I hope when I have a similarly difficult decision, I do as you showed us tonight.
My pleasure.
With that, I'll accept a motion to adjourn. So moved.
Right under the wire, too.
Good night, everybody. Thanks.